Okay, so it's seven o'clock. We're going to enter into our workshop for the half hour and then promptly at 7:30 start our regular meeting. And for our workshop, our planning consultant, Mr. John Clark, will walk us through the latest on a local law to amend parking requirements in the city of Beacon. Mr. Clark?
Yes. We've talked about this in general terms before, so now there's a draft law on the table, although it hasn't been actually gone very far. In the city council, they've had one workshopped on it, so...
It was referred.
Yes.
Yeah, it was referred to the planning board. And they have a public hearing scheduled, right, for December 18th?
Really? I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it's in, yep.
So we've been talking about this for a long time. It started out of the affordable housing measures, and I was suggesting that overdoing parking affects the availability of lower rents and inhibits the number of units you can put on a small parcel because you have to provide a lot of parking spaces. And I noted that cities all over the country, over 200 at last count, have eliminated minimum parking standards. And most just eliminate parking standards altogether and let it become a negotiated thing between the applicant and the planning board. Or they allow the applicant to determine how much parking they think they need for the market they have. And most developers will provide parking because otherwise they won't get financing from banks and they won't have happy tenants. So that's what some cities, like Hudson, just put in a one-liner in their parking standard saying no more minimums and left it up to the planning board to figure out what to do. Others, others take the approach that we're suggesting here, which is to turn the minimum standards that we've had into maximum standards. So the idea is instead of bargaining up beyond a number, you bargain down below a number.
Have practical observations come into these discussions? And I'm going to throw out something that I can't empirically, you know, I can't say this is absolutely happening, but my strong sense from walking around town is, is that when the apartments were finished out in the theater building, you know, near, you know, yeah, exactly, near Brothers Restaurant, that that municipal lot and the street spaces on, was it Van Nijdeck? Just filled up and have stayed filled up. And so I think there are absolutely going to be apartment developments where if they don't have parking, they're going to consume, you know, parking, that's public parking in their vicinity. So like in that, I'm, just based on what you've been saying so far, I'm sort of like favoring the, let the planning board maybe use discretion on different projects because...
Well, that's what allowing maximum parking standards instead of a minimum allows because you can go up to the same line and then you can even go beyond it if you want. The standards are now more like guidelines, maximum guidelines. So it gives the planning board all that flexibility. Remember, I wasn't here for the theater when it was approved, but as I understand it, it was exempted from all parking by the 1964 exemptions. So you couldn't apply parking there with...
I understand that, but I'm just saying that it's an example of a development without parking that was provided and, you know, what was the potential observed impact?
Right.
It glommed up all the parking near it.
Yes. So one thing that the proposed law does is eliminate the 64 exemption. So if you're going to have the ability to bargain, you don't have that sort of cut-off-your-head sort of exception in the rule that allows you to just go to zero.
I thought, I was pretty sure that with the theater building, the issue was there was a variance granted in the eighties that was not time limited. It was not a 19, because it wasn't an apartment building in 1964.
I recall something... I was told they, they applied for the 64 exemptions, but like I said, I wasn't around when it started.
Something similar, do you remember, David? There was a...
Yeah, I recall what David recalls, that there had been an exemption granted to them decades ago.
It was, it was a very, there was a variance granted in the eighties, if I recall correctly, for conversion to an apartment building that was not time limited, so it wasn't the 1964 apartment.
Okay. So in the interest of sort of getting through this, let me, let me get through the text as much as possible and then we'll have a discussion. I'll give you a quick outline of what's being proposed, and you can see it on the screen or on your computer. So it's sort of four things get done in this law. First of all, the word requirement is sort of purged from the, where it's, it's in there all through it because that was the purpose of 223-26, was to make requirements. And so nothing's required now, other than single-family homes, two-family homes, and accessory apartments, because those are often determined by the building inspector. And he doesn't have the discretion or, that the planning board has, so there's a limit of one per each of those uses. So if you have a single-family, a two-family, or an accessory apartment, you have to have one parking space for any of those type of uses. Two for a two-family, one for one family, and one for an accessory apartment. Other than that, the big change is that the maximum list has been revised slightly, where it's really out of character and needs updating, and also it's turned into maximum rather than minimums. So there, there's a guidance for the planning board, is this is what was previously required. Now it's considered a maximum rather than a minimum, but you have the ability to bargain down or bargain up depending on the use and the context and the size of the parcel and all the things that a mandatory minimum doesn't take into consideration. And that's why the minimums are so arbitrary and, and a good thing to get rid of is because they were based on a use, as if all uses in one category are the same. Whereas some have bigger parcels, some have little parcels, some are out of town, some are in the center and have public parking available. All those things are now available for the planning board to use. So if you walk through the text, I will go through it quickly. The other thing, the big change, is that the 1964 parking exemption is eliminated because that seemed so far out of date to try to go back and research what the, and, and that second paragraph on that two has 187 words in it without a break. One sentence with 187 words. It's really impossible to understand unless you go through it six times. So it's, it's nice to get rid of that. So we do have that one exception for single, two-family, and accessory apartments. And instead of two per unit, now we have one per unit, so that's, that's the minimum. You can, obviously, people, if they want to put four in their lot and have room to do so, they can do it, but you have to have at least one. The other change, there's a few little or smaller changes that were asked by members of the council. They wanted more landscaping, so for at least one tree has to be provided for each eight spaces instead of each 10 spaces.
What's the reference to a corporation council? What is that?
That's the city attorney.
Oh. What's the corporation? The city?
Is that in here, corporation council?
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, that, that...
Some, some cities refer to...
City attorney, corporation council.
Last time I ran into that in your show.
Yeah, I was just curious. That's you.
The other change that the planning board, or the city council asked for, and this one I want your opinion and the city engineer's opinion in particular, the planning board shall require pervious services for the parking spaces unless the applicant established the planning board's satisfaction that if the underlying soils did not allow natural drainage. So they want pervious pavement. And there's debates about pervious pavement, how well it holds up, how, how hard it is to maintain, how more expensive it is, all those sorts of questions are out there, and I don't know.
It's not easy to maintain. There's special requirements for maintenance, for vacuuming of it, cleaning it out. It is costly. Yes, it does work in the beginning, but in the Northeast, it does have its failures, especially during the winter months and periods.
I think that we could look at the intention behind the request and, you know, satisfy the intention through bioengineering.
There may be able to do bioretention landscaped areas. There may be other paver areas that we could do. Once that material clogs up, it's hard to get it cleaned.
So you're saying the council is insisting on all pervious material?
That was agreed upon by several members to put in the draft. And I said, well, I'll run it by the planning board and the city engineer and see what they thought. I think my preference is to use green infrastructure, rain gardens, instead of having raised curbs, and so that all the pavement drains away from the landscaping, it drains it towards the landscaping. Those sorts of things, I think, are more effective.
Could we look at it in terms of design guidelines as opposed to requiring permeable paving, so that we can...
Yeah.
Because I think there are instances where permeable paving can be appropriate.
Right.
And can be maintained.
Right.
And, and they're basically, they're saying pervious surfaces. So there are other things besides pervious asphalt. There's asphalt pavers or block pavers that you can use.
Turf block.
Right. So there's different things, but I also agree with John that there's other green engineering aspects that can be used, bioretention areas, sloping everything to the landscaped islands.
So one of the recommendations back to the council might be to make that a little bit more broad.
Yep.
To require green infrastructure, including things like pervious surfaces, to give you a little bit more flexibility on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, it sounds like the intention is to minimize the amount of water going into the storm water system.
Right.
Right, minimize the runoff. At least they've couched it with the underlying soils, because there are a lot of areas in the city we have clay soils. Nothing's going anywhere.
So, so we'll mark that one.
So moving down, and this is the most important part, is this section D.
John, can we go back for a second to that same page?
Sure.
Can I just ask a question? I'm wondering for item number seven at the bottom of that page where we were talking about the green infrastructure, where this is the, the shared parking, two or more uses on the same lot. And I'm wondering whether we even need that section if we no longer have requirements, minimum requirements per use on the lot, and the planning board is determining what the appropriate amount of parking spaces are for each application that comes before it. That's essentially what this section gets to in the instance where you have required minimums for each use. So I, I think we should consider whether you even need item number seven.
The whole thing eliminated?
Yeah.
Yeah, I took out that key sentence.
Right.
In there.
Is this item seven revised?
Well, there still is the shared parking section, so it gives a relief from this section. So if, if you sort of total up the two, and then you can deduct from that based on the shared use analysis. That's the way it works now.
But if we no longer have requirements for the two?
Uh-huh.
What are you adding up and deducting from? I don't know, something to consider.
Well, it talks about contiguous lots, though. Which I think is important if the owner owns the next lot over and has room for parking and it's needed, you know, you could ask for it.
Could we go back to number five?
We're going backwards here, huh?
Yeah, well, the pervious surfaces. So are they expecting this also of a single-family home? And a homeowner is supposed to put in some sort of pervious asphalt or anything?
I think they were probably envisioning more commercial and large residential than single-family homes, but...
It doesn't clarify that.
You don't even see, the planning board doesn't even see single-family homes for the most part, so...
Yeah, but if we were to have a subdivision, well, we just had one, 12 Highland.
Yeah.
You know, are all those homeowners actually going to be able to maintain?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Their drives properly. You know, I can see a commercial entity doing it.
Yeah.
But it's costly, but I don't see the individual homeowner, and it's just going to go by the wayside and fail.
Gravel, which is no fun in the winter when you're plowing.
Right, it's out in the road.
You've got to rake it back onto your driveway. Okay.
All right, going down to seven again.
Are you, are you talking about seven revised or seven new?
Seven at the bottom of four, page four.
Two or more uses on the same lot.
Yeah. Got it. Planning board may approve the joint use of parking space by two or more establishments on the same lot or on contiguous lots, the total capacity of which is less than the sum of the space is needed for each.
So it shows that two adjacent uses can share parking, or two adjacent lots can share parking?
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily see an issue with that. I think it provides a little clarity, I think.
Yeah, I, I think it should stay, myself.
Provides a lever.
Unless you have a good reason why it shouldn't.
One question about the joint adjacent lots would be if, if that would prevent development, you know, we recently had a project where there were, there was an adjacent lot that was used to get approval for parking, right? And then subsequently, it was proposed as a development site, and the city had to accommodate the parking that was provided for it. And since it was a separate lot, there was a whole issue that they had to, currently they had to combine those lots, and that was part of the approval process, and it was a hurdle they had to deal with. So if you're, don't, aren't in control and potentially have, have a requirement for your site plan that's on an adjacent lot, they potentially could be sold.
Well, I think that, I am not familiar with that, what led up to that. That, again, was one of those things before my time, so I'm working on sort of half-knowledge. But I think it was because they didn't shore it up in a legally constituted easement or some sort of agreement that you could hold the second lot to the long-term deal. That's my understanding, but I don't know if that's true or not. I think we're talking about 344?
Oh, yeah, that was because it was, yeah, it was a lease. So it wasn't a, you know, something that runs with the land. It wasn't an easement.
Right, but that would be...
Leases can be terminated, leases can be broken.
Right. But also adjacent lots.
But the code allowed for that particular mechanism to be one, to tie the two lots together. So do we want to make some restriction in this?
Well, I think that might be covered under paragraph B1, where they're providing a binding agreement in a form approved by the corporation council.
Binding means binding.
Structures, land uses, or more adjoining lots may be provided in a single comp facility or facility on one or more of said lots, provided that a binding agreement in a form approved by the corporation council assuring the continued operation of said parking facility during the life of the structure or the land use, so...
Yeah, there is...
I don't know if there's, right, more that needs to be added to that. I mean, I would defer to Jennifer on that, if there's something else that needs to...
Yeah, I think the term binding agreement would include something like a lease, but I think we've seen that that isn't necessarily, in all instances, the best mechanism.
Right, so I don't know if we need to expand upon that.
Easements or deed restrictions would be the better terminology there versus binding agreement.
I think that's a, that's an appropriate recommendation to make. Forgive me, if we haven't skipped past, or if we haven't gone further than the waiver of improvement, item two on the bottom of page five, that's our mechanism for discussing land banking with an applicant?
Yeah.
And that hasn't changed?
Right, I left that in for sure.
Other than to take the word required out makes sense. Okay, just, thanks.
So the shared parking provisions and the land banking provisions are still in there. Gives you a lot more flexibility.
Great.
And I think the land banking is, is one of those things that has proven to be very useful.
Yeah, agree. Okay.
So getting down to D again. So this is it, it sets up the list, and it's, first, the first paragraph is just sort of about purposes that promote walkability and other transportation alternatives to avoid excessive automobile traffic and unnecessarily large paved parking lots. Now, the argument is, is that by requiring everybody to have parking, free parking, you incentivize the use of automobiles. In fact, you make people auto-dependent because they, they have to have a space there for them, so why not fill it up? And that when there aren't spaces available, people think of other ways of getting around. And they rent places that don't necessarily have parking because it's convenient and they can get around by other means. So people self-select towards smaller parking areas rather than larger parking areas. That's the theory behind it.
That's the theory. I think that works in, just, I think that might work in larger communities, but what we've seen in Beacon recently is we really don't have a functioning transit system here. It's a very low capacity. Doesn't really work in a way that can be used by anybody who lives downtown or in any dense area where parking is at a premium to, to get around, to do anything. So I think it's a practical reality that everybody who occupies an apartment or a dense area in Beacon would need a car. And that's, that's going to be the case, if it's an electric car, in the foreseeable future, right? Because I don't think, it's unclear whether there's going to be a consistent dedicated support, either by population or by political will, to have any sort of transit system that'll support the idea of not owning a car in Beacon.
Actually, the city's been working with, based on the Main Street Access Committee recommendations, has been working with Dutchess County Transit, and they're on the verge, they're in public comment sections of upgrading the best system in Beacon in which you will have a back-and-forth shuttle on Main Street rather than big figure-eight loop.
Yeah.
And the other perimeter loops are going to be increased in number and, and capacity.
But have there been any studies of like what the actual capacity of even a constant loop would be, and whether that would have the capacity or the extent that would allow somebody to go shopping in a place that wasn't Key Foods or do other things, right, that is required to have like a normal life without the use of a car?
That's what the, the bus is, the bus system is, is trying to make those improvements. Whether they're sufficient for your standards or not, I'm not sure.
But they haven't, there's studies, they can study these things.
Well, that's what they're doing, that's the point.
Okay.
They did a bus study, and they've, they've, they've tried to figure out how to improve the bus system in Beacon and elsewhere in the county. And so you should take a look at the new system proposals. They're online at Dutchess County Transit and maybe comment on those.
I've been taking that bus for 20 years. I know how many people use it and how, how, it's varied over different service ways they've been serviced, so...
Look, I understand what the rationale overall would be, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Yeah, no, I'm done.
It seems like you're tapering off.
No, no.
I understand the overall rationale would be for having a limit on maximum parking spaces. Maybe, say we were in some spread-out suburban area in Southern California. During my time on this board and previously on the zoning board, I can think of many examples of people who wanted exemptions or variances from parking minimums. I cannot think of any example during the time I've lived in Beacon of someone building something of private accord and everyone being like, why did you put all this parking in? Like, I cannot think of a single example where we have had a problem that would need to be addressed with a maximum parking requirement.
Well, we have in terms of land bank, we've used land banking in that regard.
I think that goes to management. It has to do with whether these are dedicated spaces to residents, which often aren't used or empty for a lot of the day. There's a lot of ways that shared parking can be more efficient, can be functionally better, right? But you still need the actual parking spaces for the amount of people that live here.
Right, yeah, I don't understand what the rationale would be with saying this is the maximum number of spaces you can do, you can have in Beacon, regardless of whether it makes sense to otherwise adjust whether and to what extent we have minimum requirements.
You know, the way I look at it is as a just-in-case, where you have guidelines for an applicant and for us, in the instance, potentially, who knows, 20 years from now where somebody says, I want to build more parking than it says here I can, or I want to go up to the maximum. I don't see any issue with it, because quite honestly...
John, you're thinking the flip side is that somebody might come to us and say, I'd like to build more units on this parcel, and I can do that with less parking? It might happen, I mean, I don't know.
So I, I understand your questioning of why we would even have a maximum?
I think it gives you a, some sort of standard in the code so that you can work off that. If there were no maximums, no minimums, then every application would be a crapshoot. You wouldn't have any idea what would be sort of a acceptable range of parking. And so this, you've had these minimums for years that people have been working with, so now I've adjusted some of them down significantly because they really were overboard.
Yeah.
You know, did I give you the example of the bar? Current code requires twice as much parking for a bar as a restaurant.
Heck, yeah.
So that you're insured that you have plenty of drivers at bars.
That's my favorite.
But some of these just don't make sense, so I bargained some of those down.
Yeah.
That were way overboard. But this gives you a sort of a set point, and then you can say, okay, well, that was what we used to consider a minimum, now let's consider that a maximum and figure, is that too much?
I like it for that reason. It's somewhat of a guidepost.
Yeah. And that's the way it's set up, is a guidepost.
But don't you think that also different areas of the city have different demands?
Exactly.
Naturally, there's an area of the city that was, that was developed before automobiles were commonly used, right? That land use, the way parcels were made and the density and the traffic, and that is all set up to make it difficult to manage automobiles. There are other parts of the city that are, were built for large-scale parking and automobile use, right? I think that you might think that rather than doing a broad, having the same amount of requirements throughout the city, or no requirements throughout the city, that you tailor that to the types of uses and the potential for transit, let's say, that might occur in different parts of town. That would be why, that would be a zoning aspect.
And we've done that to a certain degree over the years because we lowered the parking standards in the CMS district where there's a lot of public parking, and, and we lowered it in the linkage district where you can walk to the train station, and we haven't lowered it in other places like the general business district, which is where you have a lot of big extra parking lots that are half-empty or three-quarters empty most of the time.
And in some instances, this revision gives us a little bit more ability to customize, for lack of a better word, based on the application and where it sits within the city, because it's, it's ultimately what we deem somewhat, to some degree, appropriate.
Exactly.
Right?
And it gives you more information.
We have some agency over that.
Yeah. So if you go down section D, it lists the sorts of things that you should consider as part of it. So the context of the site matters a lot more under this code than, whereas before, any retail needed the same amount of parking. It defines what a professional parking study is. Gives more examples that it has to have a, what do we call it? Demand reduction strategies. So it incorporates analysis in the parking analysis, it has to consider whether there's walkability in that area, whether there's bicycling proposed for the site, bike storage or whatever else, whether it's on a transit line. All those things now have to be incorporated into a traffic and parking study. Whereas now, it's basically all about, and they deduct, they don't, they mention things like pedestrian system, but they don't account for them in the traffic study because they want to be as conservative as possible to provide as many parks... Because they want to be as conservative as possible to provide as many parking spaces as they possibly can. And this gives you the incentive to say, "No, if, if this is in an area where there's plenty of public parking and the street parking and transit services, we don't need as much parking on the site." And you can put more housing there instead, for instance.
So the judgment of how much parking ought to be in our, in, in the, with the discretion that the board would have, right? Would be somewhat dependent upon our consultants having a discussion with an applicant's discuss, consultants, right? Much like happens in some of our other ones, which can be a long and drawn-out process, right? And sometimes it's opaque to the public because they're discussing numbers, like traffic studies aren't something that normal people are going to start drilling down to see whether or not it makes sense, right? They're just working on the general, top-level recommendations of someone that we hire, that we hire for however many months it takes, and the applicant. And it might be dependent upon whether the applicant's consultant has a more robust support system, a more persuasive way to argue it, you know? So I don't know if that's the simplest way to resolve it. I'm wondering whether that's the simplest way or whether it's adds a level of complexity and uncertainty, right?
Yeah, well, and I'll just throw in, I mean, another observation, it, there's absolutely nothing in here that, by my reading, requires... We've got this list of things that the planning board is supposed to consider in determining the appropriate number of parking spots. One of them is a parking study prepared by the applicant. While it's an including but not limited to list, the next paragraph is talking about any professional parking study requested by the planning board, which at least inferentially says, "That's not actually part of our decision-making process at most."
Tools, they're tools.
It would be, we'd hire a consultant and they'd like talk to the consultant hired by the applicant.
Not necessarily.
Well, it works the way, same way it does now, is that for any major project that has traffic or parking implications, we ask for a traffic or parking study.
Yep.
And for any major project that involves traffic, we have our own contraption. So it would, it would be the same as what you do right now for minor projects, for chains of uses, for things that don't have a big parking implication. You can make your own determination, but if you have the right under this to request a professional parking study for any major project in which there are complexities.
And I find those very useful tools for the board.
And if you hire the right consultant, you will get a good product out of it.
Yep.
Correct, but, so this actually goes to, if you were asking me what changes we should be making to this current structure, the current structure meaning the status quo, where we have parking minimums and then we have provisions in place that say the planning board can approve alternative parking arrangements based on parking studies. The number-one change I'd say is we, it should be our consultant that is preparing the parking study. You give us your plans, we will tell you how many parking spots you need. Not a situation where the applicant is preparing the study and our consultants are essentially coming in and giving us a judgment on whether it was reasonably prepared, not this is how I would have prepared it myself. So now we're saying we get rid of the minimums, meaning the solid guideposts that we're starting out with, and it's just dependent on what the applicant's study says.
No, no, not at all. That's, that's not, it would, it would not, the ability to, and I, I see what you're saying, but number one, the, it's, it's incumbent upon the applicant to, one, come to us with what they reasonably think is an appropriate parking scenario. And as a part of that, it makes total sense for them to support that with a parking analysis paid for by the applicant. Where we have the ability to engage our consultant to either confirm or poke holes in that, that's a very useful tool. And it's a, it's a conversation that consultants have been having on applicants for time immemorial. So it's very much how we do it now, and it's a very useful set of mechanisms, tools, to ultimately supporting the record for a thorough planning board review for what ultimately is a very public process of determining the appropriate amount of parking.
And I just want to mention too, it's not just the conclusion that's vetted by our, you know, traffic and parking consultant, it's also the methodology. So whenever there needs to be a change in the methodology that the applicant's consultant has used in order to come up with the conclusion, our, our consultant weighs in on that as well. And make sure that they're satisfied not just with the conclusion, but the methodology that was used to get to the conclusion, including the inputs and all the data.
Right.
So we're, we're at time, I just want to, I just want to, we're running over, so unless there are other specific modifications.
Well, I think we have to pick this up at the end of the meeting.
Sorry?
I think we're going to have to pick this up at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, so then to that end, we'll, we'll do just that and we'll welcome everybody to our final planning board meeting of the year, our December City of Beacon Planning Board Meeting. Thank you for joining us, and we will go to our first item of business, which is to enter our last month's meeting notes into the record. Unless there are any notes for modification that we want to air here, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to approve the planning board meetings from last month as recorded.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then with that, we will go to our first agenda item. And that would be, forgive me. I clicked on the zoning board agenda by accident. That's our continued public hearing of application for site plan approval and special use permit, personal wireless service facility at 375 Washington Avenue, submitted by Verizon Wireless of East LP, doing business as Verizon Wireless. And just as a kind of a status of where we're at, we are still in open public hearing. As a board, we have a draft neg deck to discuss and perhaps act on, as well as a draft resolution to discuss and potentially act on as well. But with that, we'll first go to the applicant for anything they would like to share with us at this point in the application, and then we'll hear from our consultants and discuss amongst ourselves. Hi.
Certainly. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dave Brennan with the law firm A Young Summer out of Albany. With me in back is Nate Keenan from Tectonic Engineering, our radio frequen, excuse me, our site acquisition specialist. And on the screen is Martin Lavina, our radio frequency engineer coming in via Zoom. And so thank you for this opportunity. Since we last met, we did submit written responses to the comments requested from the board, as well as the board's engineer and planning consultant, into the record. And I agree, we left the, the planning, excuse me, the public hearing was left open for continued public comment. And so I presented the application at length last time. I'm happy to go back over that if you think it's worthwhile as a board, but otherwise I would defer to the board on how you want to proceed, having heard about the application previously.
I'll ask my fellow board members, any, any need, do you think, for the applicant going through the submission in detail at this point?
I don't, I don't feel a need for a recap.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, so with that then, we'll check in with our planning consultant and engineering consultant on their review of your responses to their notes.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
Yeah, they've, they've addressed all my previous comments. The only one that was hanging on from last month was the visibility from Fishkill Avenue. There's a wide-open panorama of the ridge line to the east at, on Fishkill Avenue between Mill and the Vets Office on the other side of State Street, south of State Street, so. And they report that there may be some, at least partial visibility from that spot, but it will be a half-mile away. It will be partially obscured by the trees, even in off-leaf conditions. And will blend in because of, there's a second, a small ridge, primary, a secondary ridge and then a higher ridge, so it'll be.
It has a backdrop.
Yeah, just above the tree line on the lower ridge level and a half-mile away. And I'll just remind everybody, what I said in the letter is that the city council had considered this location for designation as a scenic view, but they've never actually done so. So there's no legal protection in the zoning code from that particular spot, but it is someplace that I think in the long run may be considered again.
Okay, thank you, John. Mr. Russo?
They've addressed all our previous comments.
Great, thanks. Any questions to the applicant around the board before we go to the public?
No.
I have one question. If I remember correctly, there was a, maybe not so much a comment, but an open-ended question in the documents from, from the city saying, kind of asking what could be done with, you know, aesthetics of the, of the monopole. And the way that I read the response to comments was kind of like, well, we'll, we'll see what the planning board requests of us. Do you, I can, I mean, I can find it if I have to, but.
Yeah, no, no, I remember, we, we discussed the color and.
So I think the, the applicant was saying, "We haven't proposed to do anything to, to further sort of screen it or try to diminish the impacts." And I wanted to ask the board if we felt that that was something we wanted to pursue, given that there are some partial visibilities. And if so, you know, what would be reasonable? I'm not, I'm not personally a fan of the fake trees, and I think probably most of us are not, so I don't know if there's anything else that seems reasonable and, and wouldn't create its own kind of weird, you know, distraction that could be done to further diminish.
There's screening that works, stealth technology that works in urban environments where, on top of buildings and whatever else, you can make it look like a brick structure and doesn't, but poles of this size, you know, the fake tree is sort of the, and, and color changes and limiting the scope of the antenna are about the best you can do, as far as I can determine.
The fake tree effect actually stands out.
Oh, yeah, it always looks worse.
It's more of a nice.
It's like, "Look at me, I'm a pole, a fake tree pole."
Oh, wow, that's really doing a good job.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, it's a good question, and we did, we did discuss, not necessarily stealth technology, but ultimately the color to a great degree. And if you remember, this conversation of color came up in one of our earlier submissions, a pole on Main Street. And we left it that, and it was based on some recommendation, that the galvanized quality had more of a, sort of a matte and blending effect than.
Yeah, it can reflect ephemeral effects that are going on.
It was a city's RF engineer.
Yeah, right. It's, it's often less obtrusive than trying to go with a color, yeah.
That's the, that's the sense, and, you know, also my experience, once it, once it fully patinas as the galvanized metal.
It tarnishes and gathers moss in the north side and.
Yeah. Anyway, ultimately, it's a pole.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm satisfied. I just wanted to kind of see if anybody had any strong feelings about that one.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything, Karen?
Yeah.
So then we'll go to the public, since we are still in open public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to be heard, please make yourself known, thanks. And please provide your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Jenna Gottlieb, and I'm at 38 Helen Court. I'm here to voice my objection to the proposed cell tower on the historic overlay section of Fairview Cemetery, which borders my property line. Not only am I concerned, but disappointed that our city is even considering the cell tower, given its proximity to Glendale Estates community. After many members of our member, many members of our community attended the previous town hall, it only raised our concerns further, as this is a short-term corporate lease for infrastructure that will have a long-term impact on our community and property values. I just so happen to work for a national real estate developer, and I assess the rental rates based on market conditions and changing infrastructure for properties. With that being said, I had taken time to carefully review the public documents personally and with some of my colleagues in the industry, and found significant concerns. The most obvious concern is that Helen Court was not considered as part of the focused area surveys or the drone views. This is particularly worrisome, considering the proposed tower is merely 384 feet from my property line, yet there is not any land surveys of our community anywhere in the documentation provided outside of the anticipated cell coverage. Considering its placement, this oversight seems intention, like intentional negligence. For those of us who attended the last town hall, we were appalled by the lack of information integrity from the Verizon representatives, who claim that cell towers do not impact property values. That's a lie. It's been well documented that cell towers decrease property values anywhere between nine and 20 percent. This has been recorded from the Wall Street Journal, New York Times, and NAR. I've reported on, they've all reported on the impact of cell towers on property values as far back as 2004. I've confirmed with my colleagues, as well as local, local real estate professionals, that a tower of this size and distance away would impact our property values at the highest rate. Our community is requesting renderings or schematic plans that would adequately illustrate how the tower would appear in our community and ensure that we can properly have our homes assessed to determine the impact it would have on our property values. The lease on this structure is only five years and will service a small two-mile radius. This means after their initial lease is completed, they can ditch this tower, find a new location, location, leaving us with abandoned footings, footing structures, which is underspined in the drawings, in our backyards, and yet another neighborhood at risk of another cell tower being erected in theirs. There are no supporting documents outlining any noise, noise frequencies. Removal of trees in this area would, will further displace animals such as deers, bears, and foxes, further putting our community at risk, especially from all of the infrastructure, infrastructure going in, in nearby Route 52. And what parameters are being put in place to oversee the proper installation of this tower? And why are we allowing utility companies to put up cell towers without any insurance they have sustainable longevity? And why, more importantly, a $150 billion company is leasing land greatly limiting their ability to maintain and adequately update these cell towers they are construction, they are constructing? Why is it progressive cities such as Beacon championing and regulations and requirement on these cell tower leases? As an elder millennial, I saved for many years just to be able to afford the down payment and closing costs for my home on Helen, Helen Court. I consider myself one of the lucky mere 43 percent of millennials who've had the opportunity to even own a home and invest in their future through property ownership. That investment is now being severely threatened by the cell tower, which I believe infringes on mine and my neighbors' rights to liberty, life, and the pursuit of happiness. We've also started a petition online that's garnered almost 70, over 77 signatures as of tonight, and we urge you all to champion our community, our safety, and the natural beauty of our community and New York State over short-sighted temporary infrastructures. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stash Youngkowski. I have a procedural suggestion for the chairman. I listened to the last month's meeting and some of the people were speaking, but it was difficult to hear them because they were not speaking into the mic. So if you could direct every speaker to talk into the mic, those of us watching online would be easier. I respectfully disagree with the attorney and with the chairman that we, the public, that you, the council, the board cannot discuss biological effects of electromagnetic radiation, biological effects of these wireless transmitters. The 1996 Telecommunications Act does not prevent anybody from speaking about the problems. It just prevents municipalities and states from regulating the wireless facilities. So anyone can speak about their fears of the electromagnetic radiation. As you can see, I am concerned about it. I've got my head protected, but the rest of my body is still going to be affected. So I just wanted to point that out, that we can speak our minds based on the First Amendment, based on concerns, and there is a huge concern about the effects of the people living near this facility. I'd like to know how many of these boxes, and Jennifer mentioned, called the, the pole a stick. It's not just the pole that's the problem. It's all the boxes, the transmitters that are going to be on the pole. I'd like to know how many there's going to be, how many Verizon's going to have, the size that they are. If you would ask them to explain that to you, I think they said three or four. Are they going to lease to other companies to put their transmitters up there? So instead of three or four, it could be six or seven or eight. There's some ugly, ugly ones along Route 84. If you travel from Beacon to Fishkill, on the right side, you'll see this huge tower with I don't know how many transmitters. It's just terrible. Verizon was trying to say that does not affect property values based on the looks of the pole. I don't think people are concerned that much about how the pole looks 300 feet away. That's like a football field away. I think they're more concerned about the biological effects, that, that they'll affect the property values. A lot of people just don't want to live near these transmitters. So if you would please find out how many transmitters there's going to be. I would suggest also that you deny this application. I would suggest also that you deny this application and tell them to put something up on the mountain. There's all these other companies that are not having any problems transmitting their cell phones from the towers on the mountain. Why can't Verizon either purchase some land, I think Lenny suggested that, or lease some land or lease some more towers up there? Put these transmitters up there and not near people's houses. Also, I'd like to know if there's any current plans for the future of other, maybe smaller facilities. Back in the past, they were talking about putting something near the Rambout School. Please, Verizon, have some heart. Do not put any of these close to our children. These electromagnetic radiation affects young people, affects older people, so just stay away from our kids. I think that's basically all I have. So thank you for your time, and please deny this application. Have them go back to the mountain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening to the Beacon City Planning Board and to my community. Happy holidays, everybody. I stand opposed to the proposed construction of the Verizon cell tower in Beacon's historic overlay section.
Name and address.
Sorry?
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Mike Longo, 38 Helen Court.
Thank you.
So I'm directly in this community. While in attendance to the previous city council meeting covering this issue, I found Verizon's presentation and general response to community concerns to be frankly insidious. I was inevitably left with a strong impression this project is haphazardly planned with zero regard to the city of Beacon or the Helen Court community closest in proximity would in arguably be the most negatively affected, impacted, should this short-sighted, admittedly disposable project move forward. Verizon's representative...
Hey, how's it going?
He flat-out lied when he said cellphone towers aren't shown to detrimentally affect adjacent property values, when time and time again, research from almost every major reputable news organization has proven the opposite to be true. You know it, and I know it. And while our major concerns about the health effects apparently have no relevance or bearing on what is being considered here, it would require significant cognitive dissonance for one to fail to acknowledge there is a near universal stigma about living near a cellphone tower. I reside at 38 Helen Court, and this tower would be built directly behind my home, approximately 380 feet away from the property line, at the top of the hill, at least elevated at least 20 to 30 feet above the highest point of our community. If Verizon had bothered to do any kind of site test from Helen Court, they would have seen a 125-foot tower at that location, would absolutely be visible over our tree line year-round, but they calculatedly conducted these tests everywhere except the closest and most impacted community. Currently, as all the leaves have fallen, we have a straight, clear view through the woods, up to the proposed construction area, and beyond to the beautiful skyline of Mount Beacon. To put a temporarily disposable, ugly metal structure smack dab in the middle of that vista would unequivocally diminish mine and my neighbors' day-to-day enjoyment and overall quality of life, and act as a deterrent to anyone who would consider joining our wonderful community in the future. Why should the city of Beacon permit a billion-dollar conglomerate to lie to us and place cellphone tower whack-a-mole all over our town? Why can't they acquire their own real estate for a permanent solution? The only plan about what comes after this lease expires, if it's unrenewed, is to just erect one of these monstrosities somewhere else in town to again disrupt and devalue another community, to further disrupt and destroy our precious ecosystem and its natural beauty, and then maybe do that again if needed, and maybe again, and again? It's a slippery slope, at the bottom of which I fear the town's charming character and progressive values that inspired myself and thousands of others, so call Beacon Home a deep-down memory. And when considering approval of this tower, I implore my fellow Beaconites on the planning council to imagine being in our shoes, with a project like this going up only a few hundred feet behind your house, and solemnly ask yourself, would any of you be any degree comfortable with this happening? If you're honest with yourself and the answer is no, the moral and ethical thing to do is stand in opposition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Teresa Kraft, Liberty Street. These are my fellow neighbors. If I didn't live close to this, I'd still be here fighting this. This doesn't belong. Verizon's presentations show no indication of compromise. They consistently offer no response to the Beacon community when residents rightfully bring concerns to this podium. The city's effort to protect residents from harmful emissions and infringement on our quality of life caused by these towers falls short. Unfortunately, the average person's cries falls on deaf ears regarding the concerns of Beacon residents or to the residents of Helen Court community. Let's disconnect, and I join that club, and reclaim the power from these conglomerates suffocating us. One solution is to tell them they do not have the equipment that meets the high standards of our city. As you say, let's encourage this billion-dollar company to be innovative and come back to us when they have it. In the meantime, please deny this application to go through as proposed. Please help protect our neighborhood environment and aesthetics across this city, or if not, let them put it up in your own backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm curious, of the applicant, is there anything you heard here from some of the community that you'd like to address or answer?
Thank you. Just very briefly, I thought one thing that was a new comment tonight that wasn't previously raised at the last meeting and previously addressed was the concept that was a disposable or a five-year solution. The initial term on the lease is for five years, but it's then automatically renews unless Verizon cancels for a total of 25 years. So there's no intention to build this and then in five years take it down. These typically go up and stay up for the duration. And then, at this point in my career, I'm seeing ones from the late 90s that are now hitting their 25-year life and were extending those leases. And so I just wanted to clarify that one point that was new. I've previously addressed the other comments, and I just don't typically find it useful unless the board needs some additional information on a particular question that I'm going to change or sway people's heartfelt opinions on certain things.
Just curious, when a pole is deemed not usable anymore, is it the responsibility of Verizon to remove it?
Certainly. Under our contract, it is the responsibility. And typically, if the community is, it's in your code or is something that you desire, we will put up a removal bond to secure the money for that obligation. I've handed over many, many removal bonds in my career. I've yet to see any of them called to remove one of these because we've not reached that point. But certainly, we can do that to address that concern. And my expectation in this particular location is, the foundation sits just about six inches above grade, so even if that was left, but typically, at a cemetery, we're usually removing some or all of that foundation anyway, which is typically a requirement of the division of cemeteries to either remove two feet or all of it. So if we leave it, it comes completely out.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else? How many boxes they're putting up there and if they're going to lease to any... Stasz, if you'd like to make another comment, please do so at the microphone.
Yes, thank you, John.
And again, you know me, I don't usually allow double-dipping, but I'll give you...
I understand. It's a quick question. They did not answer if they're going to lease to other companies to put their transmitters, and how many boxes are going to be on that pole, that stick, and how big are these boxes?
Looks like the applicant's prepared to answer that question.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Stasz.
My apology for overlooking that. So there are a total of three antennas per face of the pole, so there's three sectors. Each one has an antenna. Two of them are roughly 10 inches wide by eight feet tall. The other remaining one on each side is more in the vicinity of about the size of a pizza box. And then there's three other boxes that are over-voltage protectors and other equipment that are up there that are more like the vicinity of 18 by 18. The location could be subject to additional carriers in the future. That is very typical in the industry. What I can't speak to definitively is whether any other carrier requires another location. That's really a subject matter of their particular needs and footprint. There is always a tension that exists between building a tower that's too tall and doesn't serve our purposes, and one that is just short enough to serve our purposes, yet puts everybody else down in what I call the weeds, where they would not use it because it's too low. So it is, would be constructed, and it would be constructed with a foundation and structural strength to hold typically two additional or three additional carriers. And so typically, most codes require that of the applicant, or at least from a planning perspective, boards say, once they go through this process, they don't want another tower 100 feet or a quarter-mile or whatever it is away. They will typically force the applicants to evaluate existing vertical real estate and discuss why it doesn't work for them before you're allowed to build something new. And so for that reason, back in the 90s and 2000s, where we used to build our tower and say, "No, you can't come on it, build yours next door," the municipalities became wise to that very early on and required that near universally in their codes. And so, yes, it could be subject to, if there's need, additional antennas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that, we have the opportunity to close the public hearing, conversation around the board, or motion to do so.
Conversation around the board is an option.
Sure.
So, quick question. Does the board of the city recognize potential impact on property valuation from the construction of a nearby cell tower?
It's part of the considerations for this application that's before you. It's one of, if you look at the section in the code 223, 26.4, it's one of those issues to consider in addition with aesthetics, alternative locations, and all of the other things that we've discussed during the course of this application. It is not the sole consideration. It's something that's balanced with all of the other relevant issues, including the limitations that we have under the FCC for the types of issues that we can look at.
Is there any mechanism in the city, once a project is approved, to reassess impacted properties? Or is it up to the homeowner to have to go and grieve their assessment if they feel like they are now having an impact that...
As to whether the city will automatically, as a matter of course, take this into consideration when determining the assessment, that I don't know, the practices of the assessor. However, it's always an option for a property owner to grieve their taxes if they feel they have a proper case for doing so.
And I understand, I think I understand, you know, the, you know, the kind of the federal requirements in terms of our ability to, you know, to sort of compel these kind of projects. But does the city have the ability, you know, because I think generally, we've had a couple of these applications before us, and the engineering is pretty tight, where when the project comes in, the, you know, Verizon or the applicant is usually presenting something and saying, "We've got about 50-foot leeway. You know, we've done a study, we've got a gap in our coverage, we need to place a new facility here." And there's generally, the way it's presented to us, and I think our consultants have concurred with that, there's generally very little wiggle room in terms of the sighting of the facility. It's down to like plus or minus 50 feet or 100 feet or something, you know, it's something very small. Has the city, I mean, does the city have the ability to sort of, you know, send the applicant back to the drawing board and say, "Look at, you know, what about, you know, a different network that makes more use of the sites that have been on the mountain forever and that have that, you know?" Or are we being a little bit too accepting of what's been served up to us?
No, I mean, if you're talking about alternative locations, I mean, that is part of the discussion. And that's, you know, if we go back to the beginning of this application, back in, I think it was April or May, we retained an engineer, an RF engineer for the city to review the engineering data that was presented by the applicant. That has been fully vetted, which is why our consultant is not here tonight, nor was he here at the last meeting, because that's been fully vetted as far as the need for this site and whether this particular site makes sense from an engineering and...
Which I know, and I understand that, I know we've gone through that, and I know it does, but it's, you know, there's a, it's sort of a, there are questions with certain sets of parameters. You know, say, "Look at this, the underpinnings of this, and do you, can you verify that the calculations, that there's a gap in coverage here and you can fix that with this tower?" It's a little bit of a different question from, is there a completely different solution, you know, that makes use of other sites, like, you know, on the mountain? Because part of the genesis of this is that there's a tower being, the owner of one of the towers on the mountain is choosing to decommission it. I mean, that was part of some of this, if I remember the discussions we've had historically. And that's a tower that Verizon doesn't own, so they're not, they don't have the power to control what happens to that facility. But, you know, I'm just curious whether, you know, if the city had asked a different question and said, "Look at a different network design overall that would potentially eliminate, you know, this location, even if you had to put, you know, if you had to purchase real estate on the mountain and build a tower up there." I just don't want to, I guess I, I don't want to have like, I don't want to be accused of having a massive failure of imagination, which I feel like there's a bit of an undercurrent, you know, in certain elements of the population of Beacon, that, you know, that the planning board is sort of like, you know, maybe not tackling the big questions, or we're having a failure of imagination in terms of what we could ask for from applicants.
Yeah, I think that you've created a very good record. I think you've asked a lot of questions along the way, a lot of creative questions. And I think that on your behalf, your consultants have asked those questions as well. As to, you know, feasibility of other locations like on Mount Beacon, I would turn to the applicant to address, you know, feasibility of other sites such as that. But I think that you've done a thorough vetting of this application.
Can we ask the applicant that question?
You're welcome to.
Thank you. I mean, is there another option, you know, that would, you know, and maybe it's a more costly option, but is it feasible to, you know, what would be the implications of trying to, you know, secure a site on the mountain or somewhere that was not 300 feet away from a residence?
Sure. So there's two intertwined things here. One is, we do have antennas on Mount Beacon on the tower that you were discussing. And the issue that's been identified throughout the RF analysis, and again, I apologize, I stepped into this one late in the game, and it's been going on since April, but what was vetted by the RRF engineer and submitted, as well as through the city's consultants, is that that tower doesn't work. And so what is happening is that is a bit of a relic from the 1990s, when we used whip antennas that transmitted at high frequencies, and one person in the room would have a phone in their pocket and no one else yet could afford or had one of those. And so that worked 25 or 30 years ago. Now, I don't want to say everyone in the room has a phone in their pocket, but it's a question I'm slowly will ask on occasion, but, you know, the prevalence of people using phones has required the strategy of serving the communities to adapt over time. So the bulk of the information in that initial radio frequency report, and I expect also the back and forth between your RF consultant, was to document why is it that that site doesn't work? And the issue is, it's too far away, it's too high up, and it's too far from the population it's serving. So what it does, and we can ask, you know, Martin, if we need to elaborate on this, but basically, it injects interference with all of the other sites. If you look at the radio frequency mapping that we've submitted, and you see all of the other sites scattered amongst the city, typically probably on buildings in the downtown areas, as well as in the surrounding towns, is they serve from the middle and shoot out. And basically, what we're being asked to do is, well, go into Fishkill or another town and put it up on the mountain and serve us and serve our people from some other town and shoot down with One Direction. Well, that system no longer works. It worked 25 years ago, and it doesn't. And so that's the reason why that site is being decommissioned, is it does not work. It basically, that was all of the data on the RF, was that that's not serving the people in the city of Beacon that it's intended to serve. So, on the issue of why we are... So on the issue of why we are where we are, is we did look at alternative, an alternatives analysis, and again, you just can't put this a mile away and say, okay, go a mile away and, and shoot into the city and have this work. But we looked at the water tank off of Helen Court, which is down in the trees and doesn't work. And then this is four hundred feet away through a barrier of thick trees behind where these houses face up to. So what?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're not accepting public comment at the moment.
Please don't interrupt, just to.
So, uh, you know, this is where I go, getting into the, the back and forth with the neighbors, I, you know, I nicely do this kind of night in and night out and um, I, I disagree, I continue to disagree. We have appraisal reports, I have a recent one from the town of Clifton Park, which is a, a pretty large suburb outside of Albany, where the appraisers went through, towers went up, they did the, what the sales were before, they increased them over time, and looked at those same houses selling after the tower was up and visible, and there was no detriment to those home values. And so the, the flip side is many people, the millennials, don't wanna buy a house where their phone doesn't work because that is a deal killer. If you pull your phone out when you're working from home, you don't have connectivity. So um, we disa, you know, we continue to, to disagree on that, but we believe we've made a, a strong showing of need at a tower of a reasonable height to provide a basis to provide service to the community that needs it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else while the applicants hear from the board? Any questions to the applicant? Okay, so again, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Len?
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next order of business is the draft neg deck on Secra, uh, which we have in front of us. Um, any questions for Jen or otherwise before we discuss acting on the draft neg deck? Okay, I'll accept the motion to adopt the negative deck as written.
Motion.
Motion by Karen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then last order of business, we have um the draft resolution to adopt, um, which we can discuss or I'll accept a motion to approve. Uh, motion.
Motion.
Motion by Karen. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we go to our second agenda item, that being the review of an application for site plan and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential at forty-five Beekman Street, High Street and High Street. High Street and High Street, submitted by Beacon Art Center. Why does it say that twice?
Just, it's nicer that way.
Good evening.
Sounds so nice.
This is the, this is the first time you're appearing before us on this particular matter.
Indeed, no, I'll steal Mrs. Gray's talking points of the record Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good to see you all this evening. We're not talking about monopines or monopoles, so hopefully we can give you some background of what we are doing. Um, we are here be, on behalf of the applicant, which is Beekman Art Center LLC and Bay Ridge Studios, the owners of the property. Tonight I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, our project engineer and landscape architect, uh, same as High Street and High Street, twofold. We get, ooh, I didn't get a beer though. Uh, and Justin Dates, uh, who, who is here from Colliers Engineering together with Rich DeAndrea, also from Colliers, is our traffic consultant. Um, as the chairman stated, we are before you this evening in connection with an application for site plan and subdivision approval. Uh, we're proposing to redevelop the premises for two proposed four-story mixed-use commercial and multifamily residential buildings that will be located at Beekman Street and High Street and High Street. That's because there are two currently odd-shaped lots that are part of it. So there's three total lots that are part of the application. They don't have numbers as they are, vacant parcels at the moment. Uh, as is detailed in our November twenty-eighth submission, the applicant is in the early stages of the project and also the chairman mentioned same. And so we look forward to just giving you background tonight to, to lead into these discussions. So before I turn to R.A. and steal more of his talking points, um, I did wanna give you all a quick background about the property and that way we can kind of walk you all through where we are. Of course, it's quite literally out that way, uh, through the building. But um, as we first discussed with city staff, uh, back on November nineteenth, the premises is generally located, we call it three intersections. It's North Avenue, so it's kind of where Walcott turns into North Avenue as we go closer towards eighty-four, and Beekman Street and High Street. Um, so those are sort of the, the complements, and then we also have a entrance onto Tompkins, which I'll mention in a moment. The property is noted as three lot, three lots at the moment, uh, which are presently improved as follows. So the forty-five Beekman Street lot, which is more sort of considered the, the primary lot, uh, is improved by the existing three-story commercial building and parking area. You've all likely seen the pop mart art, uh, in times throughout that area. Both of the High Street parcels are presently vacant, but you will probably recall, uh, the one closest to High Street, uh, closest to Beekman and High Street in the corner there was previously used as a contractor's storage yard. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing building that's on the forty-five Beekman lot. So as mentioned, the lots themselves are, are rather irregular. This is a funky shape. Of course, this, this lot, like many of those going down to the train station were sort of partial casualties to that of urban renewal, that whole stretch. When you look at the map before nineteen seventy, it's unbelievable to see the buildings to, to where they are. Um, to that end, um, of course, uh, notwithstanding its irregularity, uh, we do have existing curb cuts out to Tompkins Avenue, and then we have a driveway leading through one of the High Street parcels to an existing curb cut onto Beekman. Uh, it is setback generally down below Beekman, of course, as you come around Walcott onto Beekman, it really is sort of in a, I'll steal Ms. Gray's word, a gully. Uh, so it kind of is in a gully, uh, there, which actually helps lead into design, which R.A. will speak to, in trying to create some nice frontage and connectivity, uh, and activation of that street, uh, in the area. So the two High Street parcels, as mentioned, are vacant, and collectively the three parcels are located in the city's linkage district. And then there is a small odd portion of the northeast corner there, uh, of the parcel that's actually classified in the R-one-seven-five, so just the portion of the driveway out to Tompkins is R-one-seven-five. And there's actually a portion of the vacant lot, uh, the northernmost part of the, one of the two High Street lots that's actually in the HDLO. Um, we're not really sure again why, there hasn't been a building there for, for decades. Um, so we're, we're not, again, sure where those came from. But in any event, uh, of course, the premises is located right behind us on City Hall and of course, uh, the, the area surrounding us, including City Hall, uh, is comprised of high, uh, high-density multifamily residential, including the View, uh, the West End Lofts, River Ridge, and other, uh, single-family and other commercial mixed-use, uh, uses. Of course, recently approved as the sixteen West Main Street property known as Beacon Commons, uh, for sixty-two units. Uh, so with that, um, I'll let R.A. actually speak to, um, some of the actual components of, uh, the building itself and the, and the uses, cause I, I tend to take all of those uh, away from R.A. And then what we'll do is we'll turn to Rich DeAndrea to walk through, uh, the traffic consultant comments, um, and the nature of where, uh, all those access points will be. But just as far as procedural, uh, process, uh, just for the benefit of the board and the public, uh, first hearing this, uh, project tonight, the project was designed to, uh, really further the city's efforts to bring, uh, mixed-use, high-density residential development uh, to this corridor, the linkage district, um, where the project is proposed. Uh, it really was, you know, this district was designed to assist the city, or assist with the transition between Main Street and the core, uh, and the waterfront, uh, areas, and develop the comprehensive and city plan goals, uh, that were for this district. Notably, uh, the comprehensive plan and its update explicitly called for this high-type, high-density mixed-use development in this corridor. Uh, procedurally, again, as I mentioned, it is an application for site plan and subdivision approval, so it's a lot merger application. We'll make better clarifications of that, uh, moving forward in the, in the supplemental submittals. Um, you know, we designed it to be a fully dimensionally and zoning compliant application but for the parking, and again, Rich is gonna get into that, but we have prepared a traffic study and a parking study that addresses the shared utilization. Again, it's a mixed-use project and it will all be consolidated into one lot, uh, to make that functional. So we did include a shared parking analysis that addresses that. Of course, we are monitoring the city's updates, obviously, were being discussed earlier this evening to see where that goes. I don't know that that has any direct impact on the linkage district, but notwithstanding, we're, we're monitoring same. So but for that off-street parking requirement, uh, the, the application does not require, at least as far as our analysis is reviewed, any variances. Uh, with respect to secret process, we understand it would be considered a unlisted action. We're not asking the board at this time to take any secret action. Um, we're, we're still gonna provide you in a supplemental submission, a landscape plan and other things that'll help, uh, in that process as we move forward. Um, and of course, you know, we, we've reviewed Mr. Clark's comments. So with that, um, I will turn it over to R.A., please, to walk through the logistics of the buildings, what, what they contain, and then the connectivity to, um, Beekman, which we're, we're hopeful to utilize the gully, uh, for parts of that.
Thanks, Taylor. Um, so yeah, the, uh, site plan is up on the screen there. Basically, there's two four-story mixed-use commercial residential buildings. Um, there'd be sixty-five apartments and, uh, some of those would be below market-rate units. It's about fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space, um, and eighty-nine parking spaces, uh, between surface parking and some parking under the larger building. Um, and as Taylor mentioned, the landscape plan is gonna be developed. Um, and what, we, we started talking to the DOT about landscaping in that fairly large right-of-way, um, between North Avenue and Beekman Street and the property. Um, we haven't heard back yet, but we're looking to develop that plan. But either, either way, we have the minimum amount of landscaping required, whether or not we can count that. Um, and then basically, you know, we're, we're at the beginning stages of the project, um, but for, for both buildings, the, um, main bulk of the building goes up three stories, and then there's a setback, uh, fourth story. Um, we'll, we'll make sure to screen the rooftop equipment. Uh, we're looking into incorporating areas of green roof or solar panels. Um, the facade would be a mix of brick and, uh, hardy board siding. And, and we'll be, you know, developing those details and the building design and working with the ARB to, you know, as, as we go through the project. Um, and, and basically the, the building design is intended to fit in with neighboring buildings and act as a connection to the, um, Main Street corridor, which is, you know, a goal of the linkage district. So, so that, that's, um, I just wanted to show you. So that, that's the building in red there that's being removed, that's existing there Preliminary plans of, of the both buildings. And then, but like I said, you know, we're just developing the, the massing and basic design which will get developed further. And then I will hand it over to Rich.
Good evening. Um, just to touch on one thing that R.A. was talking about before I get into, uh, the details of the traffic study that we put together. Um, as far as DOT goes, we have reached out to them about improvements to the streetscape and things in the right-of-way there. Um, they require typically for anything beyond a, a sidewalk in that area in their right-of-way, they would require what's called a use and occupancy permit. So that's what we're talking about them with right now, so that would include things like just plantings, um, streetscape improvements, we wanted to do some kind of benches or something like that. So those are the kind of things that we're, we're working with them on to try and figure out what exactly they would permit in that area, um, so we can get a better handle on what we, we can put in there. Um, so that's just to touch on that. So we did prepare a, um, a traffic and parking study, uh, typical to what we've done in the past for other projects in the area. On this one, a lot of the same intersections that we've looked at in the past from other studies, but, uh, we did collect some new traffic data in September of this year. Uh, the last time we counted these intersections was back in twenty-twenty-one, so we wanted to get some, some updated data. We're looking at the, for this project, we looked at Verplank Avenue, um, Tompkins and, and, and North Avenue, North Avenue and Beekman Street, obviously North Avenue and Main Street, and then also Beekman Street and High Street. Um, we took those volumes, uh, we looked at a twenty-twenty-six design year, uh, for our future conditions. Uh, we accounted for all the projects that we know of, uh, that have either been proposed or under construction, uh, including Mirabou, um, various projects along Main Street, Edgewater, uh, the Beacon Commons and, and Prophecy Theater. Um, when we looked at what our project impacts are, we added our traffic in based on, uh, Institute of Transportation Engineers' data. You know, we, there's some things that we know right off the bat and things that I think I personally discussed with your board before, one of them being the Beekman Street and Main Street, uh, intersection. Um, so at the, this point, you know, we, we realize that there's some issues there, obviously, primarily in the PM when the train lets out, right? Um, and we've mentioned, you know, some potential changes to that signal in the past, so that's another piece of the puzzle here. Um, so we're looking at some phasing and, and timing modifications that would change the operation of that intersection. There would be some, probably some physical changes to the traffic signal at that location as well to accommodate this, um, that would improve the, the conditions coming out of Beekman Street onto North Avenue. Uh, we're working, the, part of our initial contact with DOT has been how do we get those functioning, how we make that work, and, and how we get that implemented. And this is something that I think, you know, it would be a benefit to the existing conditions and would also, you know, mitigate whatever impacts that we would be adding to that, that intersection with our traffic. Um, the, one of the other things that we've, we've looked at specifically is the, the queuing on Beekman Street and backing through the, the High Street, uh, through the, the access near High Street on Beekman Street there. Um, these improvements that we're recommending for the signal itself would, would reduce that queuing and wouldn't, what we, from what we see in our analysis, would not impact the, would, would allow people to come out of that driveway without being blocked by the queuing. Um, so that's, that's detailed in our report.
Just, just in terms of that analysis, would it take into account High Street as a cut-around, High Street to Tompkins?
Well, if anybody's using High Street to Tompkins right now as a, as a cut-around, that's reflected in our existing traffic volumes, right? Um, we have an access out to Tompkins directly, so.
Well, I'm curious whether it would, whether a comprehensive look would work to deter Tom, to, to sort of put a finer point on it.
Okay.
Deter a High Street to Tompkins cut-around.
Right. So I think, you know, we, we're, we're looking at the traffic volumes at both High Street and Beekman Street and Tompkins and, and nine D or North Avenue, so we know what those are. Um, I think the, any improvements that we can make to the operation at Beekman Street and North Avenue would make it less desirable to go around to a location where it may be more difficult to make a left turn out of Tompkins where there's no signal today, right? So I think any improvements that we can make, there's no signal at, at Tompkins and.
There is no signal, you're right.
But you're, you're basically, your report is saying it warrants a light going in at Tompkins now?
I didn't, yeah, that was my, my next point. So, so, jumping ahead of me, but, uh, so at Tompkins and, and nine D, so that specific intersection was looked at as part of the Edgewater project for potential signalization. Um, as part of that project, when the occupancy of that project comes on board, it was supposed to be monitored for a potential signal, and I think the, the approvals for that project even indicated that they would be responsible for installing a signal at that location. Um, we did that analysis here to see what that looks like right now based on the volume data that we have, adding in the Edgewater project, adding in whatever traffic that we would add at that intersection as well. And it does appear that under those conditions, both in, without us, with Edgewater, and with us, it, it would warrant a signal at that location. Um, which again would be, require, that would require DOT approval, um, so there's, there's things to go with that. Um, so yes, the answer on that is yes.
Have you modeled, uh, if there was a, a signal there, how it would affect the traffic?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, the, part of our future build condition is with and without a signal in our modeling, uh, at that location, and we've accounted for that through the entire corridor, because once you had a signal there, now you're really kind of playing with the signals that exist at Main Street and, and Beekman Street, and.
Yeah.
And how do you coordinate those? And that's all part of our, our modeling for sure.
It's awful close to.
Yes, absolutely.
The most troublesome intersection of Beacon.
Yeah. Yeah. So, absolutely, that's all part of our modeling. And that's, again, that's something that, you know, we've, this is why we've made a really early reach out to DOT on this. We, basically, when we submitted to your board, we made the initial submission to DOT as well, because I think they have a lot of involvement here.
They certainly probably saw this coming, just with everything that's gone on over the past couple of years, right?
Yeah.
So...
Sure. So, I mean, those are the kind of highlights on the traffic end of things. On parking, as Taylor had mentioned, we did do a shared parking analysis here. The site right now, based on what's proposed, requires 109 parking spaces based on the code. We did a shared parking analysis, taking into account the variation of parking on hourly basis, based on Institute of Transportation Engineers' data, again, for the hourly distributions. And we think a reasonable reduction is 89 park, oh, sorry, 20 spaces down to 89 parking spaces is what we really require. That number doesn't really account for the proximity to the train station, walking, biking, we didn't take any credits for any of those things, just strictly based on hourly demand data from IT that we think...
So you're basing that on what you consider to be the actual need?
Actual need.
Yeah. And what is if you have any, what is your strategy should the new law become adopted mid-application?
Well, I mean, we've been monitoring it, I've seen the revisions, the red line revisions so far. I didn't see exactly what you were talking about tonight 100%, but we'll obviously have to reevaluate potentially what that does to our parking number if and when that does get adopted.
Yeah. Sorry, did you have something, David?
Yeah, I mean, to your point or question, isn't, in this particular instance...
Oh, I think it's all still there.
Isn't the proximity of the train station something that, as much as anything, would indicate there's going to be less parking available in the day because, I mean, I'm trying to write this law because I used to park next to it when I walked down to Metro North. It seems like it might kind of go the other way.
What, wait, that people would...
You're going to have people commuting into the city and leaving their cars parked at their place.
Right, but that, I mean, that could be a factor here, but we also are looking at, there's data that we can look at for, or have looked at for residential developments near train stations, so, which would account for those types of occurrences.
They tend to have less cars.
And one of the things that we talked about, you'll recall, from the Edgewater project in particular, was the vehicles that would be leaving the site are going, they're going the opposite way of the vehicles trying to get to the train station. So they're not, the peak hours are oftentimes the opposite, as, so we're not contributing so much, and again, I'm not the traffic engineer, I just know it was an extensive discussion during the Edgewater project, that there was an important point that these vehicles are not the ones going down to the train station, they're going the opposite direction.
There's all kinds of scenarios we could think about. I mean, I could imagine, you know, it's the wrong time of night, you've got a sick child, you've got to get him to the doctor, and, you know, you're dealing with the backup, the wait at Beakman because the train's just let out. It's a giant pain in the ass and a quality of life issue.
But we're confusing two different things here, because saying that we may need less parking at Edgewater because we're going to have some people who live there and just commute on the train and don't have cars is not the same thing as saying, so we shouldn't be considering the impact of the train station for shared parking analysis, because even if overall there's less parking for the residential use, there could be more daytime demand for it. And I obviously am not saying that...
Yeah, I mean...
But it seems like a pretty pertinent factor for this situation.
Most data shows that if you're within a half mile of a train station, you have less parking than if you were outside of that area.
You have less parking requirements?
Less parking required, less parking demand.
Less parking used.
Yeah.
When they do capacity analysis, they find out that people who live near train stations tend to have one car more than two and those sorts of things.
There's more, and there's more people walking. I'm sure this will all become quite apparent through your traffic analysis and your parking analysis.
There's a provision in our code that allows the city council to waive half the parking if you're within a half mile of a train station.
The council?
The council.
Nice.
That's actually, and the red line version is coming out, because they would give the planning board the right to do that based on analysis that so many cars would see. The standard way of doing this is saying, well, we're doing a conservative analysis so that we're not counting the fact that it's within a half mile of the train station. And the new zoning code would suggest that you should take that into account and make them calculate how that will affect based on studies.
Right. I think that certainly, that, those red line changes or when they're adopted would certainly change how we would go about this.
I have a question about the shared analysis. The IT standards you cited were for shopping centers, retail shopping centers, and wouldn't that be indicated of much more parking than a downtown site like this? If they're figuring that, you know...
Yeah, so...
They don't have a retail Main Street analysis of hourly changes?
They don't, actually.
That's the problem with relying on national standards.
Right. I mean, then there's certainly other standards that we could potentially look at. I mean, IT is the kind of, the standard that most people use.
But they rely on suburban examples.
For the most part, right? But I will say that, and I wasn't going to get into this because, just going to throw another wrench into this, but, so we'll probably update this before we submit again, but there is a new parking manual that just came out.
Yeah, sixth edition.
That was not factored into this analysis, so we'll probably take another look at that and see if it changes anything.
And just to play on the conservative, I know, sorry, Stash, make sure I speak into the mic, just to play into the conservative analysis, as we've noted in our submission, it is a mixed use, but whether it's retail or office component, that would also either, we're taking, we're saying in the most conservatives, it's all retail, that's being contemplated, so if the ultimate factor at the end of this is office, it's going to be less, so that there's that, so we are conservatively analyzing this as retail.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'm not as concerned about parking. I'm sure, it looks to me as though there's definitely capacity to handle what would be considered ultimately between the city and the applicant, appropriate parking for the use. I'm much more concerned about traffic, right? Obviously, I think we all are, I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but I'm also very concerned about, at least from what I'm seeing now, the sort of placement bulk, if you will, for lack of a better term, and overall sort of, you know, integrating into the context of the surrounding area of the massing of the buildings.
Yes, you're good.
And to some degree, the aesthetic. This is just me personally, I'm not on the ARB, so you'll probably hear from me during these meetings. I'm getting a little sick and tired of the brick and black.
Right, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, and I think part of what we're going to do here and what it doesn't represent here, again, the gully, you know, you hear that theme coming forward. We discussed this initially with Mr. Clark, and I expect his comments will probably reflect something similar this evening as were in the written comments. But the way that this building is designed on the podium, right, so if we're talking about specifically the 45 Beakman, not the one, the home plate building?
Well, the two have very distinct ways that they should respond to the landscape, and I agree with you. The larger building is in that recessed, it's probably a good six to eight feet below...
Exactly. So what you're seeing there is, you're trying to activate the sidewalks, so the intent is to walk right into the first floor at level. So the, so the building is being designed to sort of take advantage of that. Mr. Clark had mentioned, hey, if somehow DOT wants to make a deal and make this part of the property, of course, there would be some other ways that, I think, make a little, you know, adjustments. Whether that comes throughout the process, great, but right now, the best that DOT has available for its right-of-way is landscape and plantings that can be...
I get it. All I'm saying is that based on what I'm seeing now, you have a lot of work to do to integrate into context.
Yes.
And to be much more sensitive to context, especially given the depressed nature and what the experience is of viewing that building from the street level when it is in that dip as well, a very different kind of condition on the corner building, just relative to its scale, its proximity to the residential units. I understand this is part of that transition zone, I understand the comprehensive plan supported bringing more density here as well as commercial, but there are many ways you can do it, and many better ways you can do it than the way, what I'm looking at right now.
We're going to make sure we have renderings to your exact point, so that you're seeing this from those, because it's, because of the nature of the site, you're going to need it from different viewpoints.
No, I understand it's early, I'm just, I got to, I got to...
No, I like when comments come, usually I just get to talk and then we head out on the first night, so I appreciate that, but we're very mindful of that, that is why the buildings are pulled up as close as they can to try and align with the vision of the Lincoln District, and of course, to set it back away from any of the residential neighbors, again, who are up on the hill, as, you know, and landscaping will benefit a lot in those instances.
Keep in mind there, they're up on the hill, they're looking at your roofs, and they're looking right down.
Exactly.
That house that's the closest to the building on the corner of High Street and Beakman. I considered making an offer on that house when we were looking for a place in Beacon and 96, and at that time, you were looking down at that construction...
Contractor yard.
Lay-down area from Contractor Yard.
City Works.
And that was the reason not to put an offer in on that place. But that, High Street has a collection of probably some of the most stately Victorian homes, it's a gem of a street, especially places like Botched Brier, they're like super minty, and so...
So don't mess it up.
Yeah.
We got that.
I'm pretty sensitive to that.
The architect, I hear the architect's done some things before in town, so we'll, I hope he's listening.
You're only as good as your most recent work.
With that, I will turn it, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One of that has to do with traffic. Has anybody, has it been contemplated to add a turning lane on 9D? And has anybody calculated what that effect would have on traffic backing up on Tompkins, on Thompson, and preventing the traffic flow in, whether that, what the pros and cons are with the multiple signals in that region?
A turning lane on 9D?
Yeah, where all the traffic packs up. That's the worst intersection, correct?
Onto 9D?
No, from 9D.
From 9D down to...
To Beakman.
Like a sort of right-turn lane.
On the 9D, an extra lane on 9D where the cars back up that block Tompkins, right?
Right.
Whether or not a, adding a lane, they are a turning lane, basically, to allow traffic, cars to sit there and make a signal.
So it's something, it's something we can look at. There's certainly, based on what we're seeing, the right-of-way available to do it. But I think, you know, the time, the signal changes that we've recommended address both coming out of Beakman Street and getting onto Beakman Street, actually.
Are there impacts of the signalization, because there's multiple signals, that make it difficult to manage it and the separation between them? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I'm not, you're the expert.
No, no, so, yeah, and that, I understand where you're getting at there. So the Tompkins Street signal that we discussed is not a given thing. I mean, I think, you know, it's somewhat borderline, and whether or not DOT will actually want a signal there is a question mark in my mind. If Edgewater didn't exist, right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't warrant that signal on our own.
Right, but that's why we're doing comprehensive reviews.
Right. No, I know, I'm just telling you, like, we wouldn't warrant that signal on our own, so that wouldn't, it wouldn't occur. But, you know, I understand where you're getting at. Look, the coordination of those three signals, if they were, if that signal was to go in is very important, to make sure that all works. And if, if the right turn lane is something that would be needed, that's something we would have to look at.
Yeah, I just mean, the thing to address is, that's probably the worst intersection in the city of Beacon, correct?
Yeah, no.
By far. It is a huge impact, having idling cars sitting there for the amount of time that they spend is an environmental impact that's much worse than a lot of other things that we've been discussing as an environmental, in the impact forms. So it's addressing that and also, you know, allowing for more pleasant traffic through the city. It'd be really valuable publicly to everyone. It's the biggest pain in the ass.
Yeah, it's necessary.
When this came, this project's...
I think it's established that this application cannot add to the problem, right? The problem is well-known, it's understood, it's bad, and so we look forward to seeing what your solutions to alleviating the problem will be.
Have you considered one way in off Tompkins to avoid people compromising the F-rated intersection?
So there's knock-on effects on other streets, right?
What?
There's knock-on effects of traveling on other streets then. The turning, and there are a lot of people that live in single-family homes in that whole area.
No, 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 I'm talking their driveway into their site, so they're not adding to the Tompkins problem, which is the, you know...
But it works both ways, I think. I mean, you have to look at it, you're right, you're right.
The answer is yes, we have considered alternate access scenarios for that driveway.
Okay, as long as you're looking at it.
Yes, it's not, yeah, it's not a given that it's going to be, yeah, in my mind, there's other things we can consider there.
Yeah, because that entrance is also close to the Tompkins Street crosswalk, and so getting out of there when people are lined up trying to take a left is going to be a problem.
I would suggest that we think about roundabouts on 9D.
Oh, goodness.
She whispered that in my ear, and I thought she was just kidding, but I think she means it.
Cars work really good at gateway locations, but not where there's a lot of pedestrians.
Part of what we want to do tonight, as you'd expect, so I'll, you know, give you one of my asks now. I think earlier we mentioned, of course, we have our initial report, Mr. Andre is going to update that now, I think reflective of Mr. Russo's comments about the new manual and all the other things that we're talking about this evening, but if the board sees fit, we'd ask that it consider circulating the updated report when it's available to the city's traffic consultant for review, so that'll further this conversation too.
What are you asking for?
Just for you to hire your consultant to review his report.
Yeah, when the updated traffic, when the updated traffic and parking analysis is submitted by the applicant for the next meeting, that will get forwarded to Creighton Manning for them to review and provide your comments.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Stop asking for...
So now I'm going to go to the exciting stuff, and I'm going to turn it to Justin Dates, also with Colliers, to go through the engineering side of things.
Oh, okay.
And then, any other questions?
Good evening. This will be brief, as we are only at a sketch or concept...
Still early, yeah.
Yeah. But I think the overall, you know, takeaway and, you know, what our team had noticed is, as Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you know, is the highly visible corner. And the aesthetics and the streetscape treatments is one thing that we're going to have to focus on for the building aspect, as well as the connectivity to North Avenue and Beakman through these improvements that we're talking about, the sidewalk connections and improving the streetscape improvements as, you know, DOT will allow us, and hope they will, let us to get into, you know, some nice connections into the project site. Also, you know, just pointing out, putting the parking behind the building, you know, trying to make that, you know, substantially, you know, less visible from the street, having it behind the building, having the underground parking in building number one or the 45 Beakman, and using that topography between the existing frontages and the site, use the different levels of floors of that building to make up that difference, right? We have about a story's worth of difference, or the garage floor, between the site elevation and up at the intersection of Beakman and North Ave, so...
So that is about almost 12 feet or more.
Correct. Yeah, if you look at the average, average elevations, you're about 118 up at the corner of Beakman and North, down into the site, kind of centered to that building, you're around like 105. So as you, as you go from, you know, the western side of the site up to the east, you know, it rises up, and we're going to kind of use that to, you know, kind of bury that parking level as well, you know, bury that eastern side kind of into the, into the site, so you won't see that, it won't be a full, really four stories exposed on some instances here, so. And then again, in the rear, you know, with the topography you mentioned, in the rear there, we're going to, you know, implement some retaining walls, things of that nature to make up that great difference, and, you know, recognize the importance of those, you know, neighbors that are directly adjacent to those improvements, so. So all that detail will be forthcoming, and looking forward to the, you know, the board's input on that once we put it together.
Great, there'll be plenty of it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And anything else you want to highlight for us, John and John?
Yes. There's a provision in the code about side yard parking being 40 feet back from street frontage, and I'm not sure if the, if the parking behind the corner building is a side yard or a rear yard, so that has to be sort of determined, because otherwise you'd have to push that parking back 40 feet.
Right, and that would, and actually push it closer to the neighbors rather than away, am I correct?
Yeah, we push it away from High Street.
We put it behind the building, but we'll work that, we'll coordinate with Bruce on that front, just to confirm.
I did look at it real quick, I mean, it's probably going to, you know, have to push it back, I mean, it's, you know, multiple, you know, multiple front yards, maybe you have three front yards, maybe one, you know, rear yard, so...
Yeah, we're kind of looking at it like 416 Main Street, where, you know, there's the oddness of the property line, so the old, the full, I mean, you look at the rear lot line, it kind of runs the gamb, the whole length of the property, so we're, in our, I mean, I think we should discuss it because we haven't made any specific submission to that effect, because it really is behind the building.
Is there such a thing as two fronts?
Yes, a corner building in this district is considered a two fronts, but what's the side and what's the rear on that corner building?
Well, if you have two fronts, you only have one side.
We have three fronts, yeah.
And then what's the rear?
Everything's the rear, yeah.
I'm just now catching up.
At the most, you would lose three parking spaces.
Right.
And it, you'd have more room for buffering and less retaining walls along that street, so it might be a good bargain to push that back from High Street.
We're certainly not going to, yeah, it doesn't affect ultimately the project design, but however the city sees fit.
The bigger question is the parking between the two buildings.
Yep.
Now, there's such a deep right of way there that the phraseology is that fronts on a street.
Right.
So a side yard that fronts on a street, so I would suggest, I don't know if Russo would agree, is that only the piece down by the street would be the front, that part that fronts on the street. Parking is forty feet back from that.
Right.
But it's the phraseology that counts. So that has to be sort of straightened out. Where the city right of way and where the DOT right of way transitions, because Beekman Street is a city street. And so if you make a deal about landscaping or filling or whatever on the DOT right of way, we, you also have to deal with the Beacon right of way.
Yep.
And they may be more amenable to grade changes or landscaping or transition or green spaces that are usable or whatever in that area.
Right, and that's a good point.
You have to figure out.
We didn't highlight this. This section of nine D is actually DOT. So I know there's, we run into this in a lot of projects. A lot of the nine D or other state roads are actually Beacon-controlled. This is DOT, DOT.
Yeah, but not around the corner.
Not around the corner to Beekman.
Not on Beekman, though.
Yeah. But where is the spot? It's not right at the corner. Usually DOT has.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
A little bit of leeway around the corner.
We're looking into that with a survey.
Okay.
There are a number of utilities that run in that area right now.
Yes. So that's another issue. Yeah, the height of the building in relation to the street is an issue. You want a four-story building and one-story parking below, that's sort of five stories. But the way the wording in the zone is, is that street front is where you start the measurement. Now, you have a sloping street front, so that's going to be critical to make sure that your building fits within the definition of the code for building height. What else? I think that's the major points. The rest of them are sort of more minor. That you can sort of self-explanatory.
All right. Mr. Russo, I know it's early, but.
It's very early for this, what they've come in. So they have to present all the utilities existing on the site, proposed on the site, stormwater pollution prevention plan, grading plans, landscaping, lighting, signage, striping, erosion sediment control. So there's a long list of comments.
So it should probably take us, what, to next summer? Yeah?
To twenty fourteen.
Okay. Thank you, John. Twenty twenty-four, you mean. Yeah. Anything else, board? I don't know. I didn't get that joke, so I'm just going to.
Fair enough. You have to go back to the December, November minutes. Sorry, December minutes from twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I, obviously, just adding to what you were saying, John, is this is a, this is a significant visually and symbolic intersection in the city. It defines the entrance to, like, City Hall, which maybe there were some opportunities missed with this building. Maybe we can do a better job.
With this one here?
No. There's differences of opinion, you know? There's a lot, broad range of opinion about that. But I think that.
City's listening. We'll happily develop, you know, matching buildings.
The city has an opportunity here to, to repair some of the damage that was done a long time ago that, which, like, was significant. And there's a real public interest in making this a significant building. And so I'm, I don't want to just wish, but I think I would strongly, I'll strongly work to make sure that that happens myself.
Great.
And you are on the ARB, right?
Awesome. Yeah, this should really be a landmark building at the corner, the most prominent corner in Beacon, probably.
I would say, yeah, and right now, I don't know what there is to get excited about for the, for people of Beacon in this.
And what we're seeing.
So I'm seeing like a.
Let's be fair, it's still early.
Traffic headache and not a very exciting building. So, yeah, what, it's a rhetorical question. What is there to get excited about, about this project for people of the city of Beacon?
But it does comply with the comprehensive plan, the idea of filling in Beacon Street, Beekman Street, with buildings that lead, that make the connection. Right now, there's sort of a no man's land between Main Street and the train station, or there has been over the years, and those things are filling in. And so this is an important landmark corner to fill in, something better than that's there right now.
Not to, but not to just fill it in with stuff.
No, no, it's got to be high-quality architecture that.
Right, and a very detailed landscape plan that's coming, forthcoming. So it's, we like, we appreciate that there are comments today because this is what we're, there's a lot that you'll see in the next submission that addresses a lot of these.
Landscaping is one thing.
Exactly.
And R A's eyes just opened, so we know he's.
Well, that, I don't think, anything else from our presentation, but if this is, if this is our last meeting with Mr. Clark, we will be sure to frame the napping sketch. And of course, if this is a retirement, even if just from Beacon, we wish you well in the next adventure.
I don't think we know what, it's official just yet, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I can't, I'm not ready to emotionally.
Just, just in case, if we don't see him in twenty fourteen.
Separation anxiety.
I'm, yeah.
It's a joke. Go back to December minutes of twenty twenty-three.
What's this nostalgia for an age yet to come? What is this twenty fourteen stuff?
We'll see you in twenty twenty-four.
You know, when you get it.
Is that the agenda or something?
Just, when you, when you have an attorney try to make jokes, just forget it. So we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. And that is to review an application for site plan approval. This is for a place of worship at four oh nine Fishkill Avenue. Again, it's listed twice, Fishkill Avenue and Mead Avenue, submitted by, I'm not going to say this right, so I won't. The applicant. Good evening.
SGI USA would be fine.
Actually, do you mind if I take a quick two-minute?
That's fine. I always have issues with this anyway.
You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
You all hooked up? Okay, we're going to reconvene. Thank you for your patience.
I understand the urgencies at times.
So I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. We are the engineer for SGI, who is the applicant for the site plan application. It's an exists, adaptive reuse of an existing five thousand four hundred and fifty-four square foot automobile dealership located at the property at four oh nine Fishkill Avenue. This is at the north, let's see, the northwest corner of Conklin Street and Fishkill Avenue. Also has frontage on Mead Avenue. The parcels along Fishkill Avenue are all in the general business. And the two parcels towards the rear where my cursor is over here at the corner of Conklin and Mead are within the R one dash five. SGI will utilize the building for religious assembly and gatherings of up to two hundred persons. The facility will operate Monday through Wednesday evenings and weekends. Site improvements to the, to the parking areas will provide a total of fifty parking spaces, including two ADA accessible parking spaces on the north side. Additional improvements include architectural elevations to the building facade, new sidewalk around the existing building, reduction in paved areas, elimination of existing deficient site entry points on Conklin Street over here and also on Fishkill Avenue over here, new lighting and additional landscaping for the site. The site will utilize existing water and sanitary sewer service connections. Procedurally, in our cover letter, we had mentioned that we believe that this was going to be a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Part six seventeen point five regs. And we're in receipt of the consultants' comment letters, which we look forward to discussing, but thought we'd just open up to you, Mr. Chairman, and the board and start giving us some comments. Also, we'll just show you that we do have this rendering here that was submitted along to show how a lot of that facade is going to change on the building.
Great, thanks. I know our planner, Mr. Clark, has some thoughts specifically on parking that I'm sure he's shared with you. We may want to review those.
First, I wanted to talk about the six parcels.
Ah, yeah.
I think both of us thought that it'd probably be a good idea if those are merged together because six small parcels. I did talk to the building inspector today. He does not think that you need a special permit because there's pre-existing parking condition.
Right.
If I'm correct on that.
We were going to suggest that and hope that was the decision as well, so.
So.
Only if you merge them.
So that's, that's off the list.
Only if we merge them, you're saying?
But I think merger would be a good idea. So those parking spaces are accessory parking spaces rather than principal parking spaces.
Okay, sure. If we, if we can discuss that a little bit right now. I mean, obviously, SGI is leasing the property.
Yes.
So that would require that the owner wants to go ahead and do something like that.
All right.
In assumption that at some point, this lease is going to expire and then property will be used for something different again at that point possibly. So for those reasons, we're really hesitant to do any lot line combining on this. But we'll continue to have discussions, but we're definitely not necessarily in favor of that at this point.
There might be requirements for like easements and things like that, if you had six separate parcels, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, you would have to have easements, ingress and egress easements. It's all under the same ownership.
It might complicate your life more than a merger.
You know.
But you have to talk that out with the property owner.
Yeah, the owners, the applicants, there's a, it'll, it'll cause some issues, I think, but.
Okay.
Would be, necessarily would be the easement requirements, is this property over property?
How would the residential properties in the back where, you know, you have to look at it then on a lot-by-lot basis when you're talking about zoning, including the uses? And I don't believe parking in and of itself as a principal use is permitted in the residential district. So essentially, you'd need two use variances to allow parking as a.
There's, there's a provision in the parking standards that allows an adjacent residential lot, an adjoining residential lot to be used for commercial parking by special permit from the planning board.
So then that would have to be activated then?
Well.
Then we get into this issue of are all these parcels actually adjacent?
Well, these are all adj, I mean, they're all adjacent to one.
Well.
Okay, well, all right, not an issue.
Yeah, it's supposed to be adjoining to the principal lot and there's multiple.
There's multiple.
Yeah, multiple lots.
There's four along the front.
So some of them don't have access to each other adjoining properties or not considered adjoining. The building itself is not adjoining to the far southwest corner lot, for instance.
Yeah, so I think if the applicant is not, look, I think if there's any consideration to keeping them as separate lots, we're going to have to do a deep dive and really figure out procedurally how that can happen, if it can happen at all.
Talk about form over function. We got a car dealership sitting right there right now.
So it, meaning it's existing non-conforming?
Meaning there's already parking all around the thing and we're having to debate about whether or not we can put parking around it.
But, well, we have to, I mean, this is a, this is a new application. We have to follow the law.
Yeah. Well, the building inspector was of the opinion, and I'll let him speak for himself, that this doesn't need a special permit. But both the GB parking as a principal use and an adjoining residential property, residentially zoned property, both need special permits under the code if it was, say, a new construction. But this isn't new construction, so I don't know how that works. That's not for me to determine. You can talk to Bruce about it.
I don't think it's something that can be determined right now, right?
Okay, yeah.
It seems like this isn't an issue that ought to be. Okay, look, big picture. If I'm reading this right, you're not changing the footprint of the building. The only thing we're doing is changing the use and we're basically changing some of the, I don't mean to sound, just, tramp.
Correct. I mean, the, the way the building is set up right now is, let me see, I'll pull up the architects' plans here. So if you're familiar, this elevation.
I'm assuming this is a permitted use, right?
My mouse failed me here.
It's a permitted use in both zones.
So this is the existing building, just to refresh what you're going at.
Parking is not a permitted use as a principal use.
Yeah, but, so again, it's existing non-conforming. What, what, and I don't, just kind of spitballing here, but what keeps this from being classified an upgrade? And why, why does it become an application before the planning board? Repairs.
Well, they're doing a lot of site reconfiguration.
Site reconfiguration.
It's a, you know, change of the use of the building, automobile dealership versus place of worship.
It's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use in both the R one five and GB.
Right. So, so what's triggering, what's triggering the planning board review is the, is the site improvements.
And the change of, change of use under twenty-three, twenty-five, change of use. When, and use is defined as a change in the parking requirements for change of use triggering planning board approval.
Not the specific interior use.
In our street parking.
Okay, so here, here you are.
So my.
Here we all sit with a six parcel problem.
So let's think about that one, stew about the, the actual special permit need. But the applicant's doing a much better job in terms of landscaping than the existing auto dealership.
Yeah, no doubt it would be an improvement.
Still, the layout as proposed is very wasteful in terms of amount of aisle space you have for parking. The aisle space here, just south of the building, is way wider than these. It's only single-loaded. And the bulk of the parking is farthest away from the building.
Yep.
And to get from those spaces, most people would cross the landscaping strip and walk between the two, the cars and out into aisles. So it's really better to have aisles that are parallel with the building so that people can get out of their cars and walk down the side of the aisle rather than cross through the center of the aisles. And then you have a north parking lot and a south parking lot and a big wide driveway in between. So I tried to come up with a plan that would show, is it possible to put fifty car spaces on the south side of the building? And it is possible. And I don't know what you think about this, but it seems to me it's a, you'd have far less asphalt, more landscaping and safer pedestrian routes from the parking spaces to the building.
Yeah, so, I mean, what, I don't have a visual I can put up on the screen, but it's on the back of John's letter.
Yeah, yeah.
You may all be familiar with it, but.
Looked at it and would consider it preferable.
The site right now, so the red areas generally and through here are areas of pavement that we're removing as part of the application. The majority of the grades that we have are generally what's existing. If we were to try to put the ADA parking spaces over here, as is in John's sketch, this area is about two to two and a half feet lower than the door elevation in the front there. So the way this building was configured was the northern part was the original building. There was an addition to the south, which is actually automobile repair that was lower. The elevation of it is lower. And then on this side of the building right now, there's actually a ramp that comes up from that building or from the parking into that ramp, into the floor elevation, that part of the building. So we're trying to really maintain a lot of the drainage patterns. We're trying to do basically a lot of saw cutting along the, along some of the pavement just to kind of keep that base area, to try to not have to bring in a lot of fill and start changing the, the topography and all the, all the other things associated with having to change that around.
Looking to do as little work as possible, is what you're saying.
I'm sorry?
Looking to do as little work as possible.
Well, it's expensive what we're doing already, but, you know, it would make it a lot more expensive if we did it that way as well. And, and we're also trying to create this feel in the front of the building, so this feel of having the walkability from Fishkill Avenue directly into the building with the, with the landscaping along the front of the building. If we were to have the entrance come in, which would generally be around near this tree here per the sketch, and have that drop-off area, we also think that there could be some queuing issues if they're dropping people off near the front door and possible spilling out into fifty-two, whereas if we're coming in from the northern entrance over here, you can queue a few cars in here if they're letting people out and then they can go find the parking spots and walk in themselves, the driver could walk in themselves, so. We do have some hesitations to trying to change a lot of the, the grades out there and we would have to do that, we feel, with the, with the layout that you provided with us, so.
I'm looking at your grading plan and it shows elevation one eighty-one, where the handicap spaces are. And the sidewalk corner is one eighty-one point five nine. It doesn't look to me, either you're making changes in your plan, in your grading plan, to level that spite out or there isn't such a significant difference as you're talking about.
It's, it's, one eighty-two five is the building elevation right up here in the front. And this is one eighty point eight right over here.
So you're saying the floor inside is one eighty-
So you're saying the floor inside is 182.5?
The floor inside on the north is 182.5. The floor on the south is around 182.
First floor is 182, and 181?
Got a long distance here to make it up, and you're putting in a new sidewalk.
Well, the other question is, so if you look at John's layout, and the concern is the handicap parking, the accessible parking being on that side because of grades, and that's why you want them on the other side, you could still look at altering the parking lot so that people are not walking across that center aisle, and they're walking down behind the cars.
I still don't see why you need two parking lots.
Yeah.
It's just an excess amount of asphalt that can be worked around.
I tend to agree. I think a more efficient, compact approach to parking relieves a significant amount of impervious surface. So I understand this concept of doing as little...
We're losing about 17% of impervious area on this site already.
Yeah, but you could, you could move 30% or 25% or something much more significant.
With additional, you know, I'm trying to preserve as much of the subbase and whatever we can, so if we end up just doing a milling and then a new top course versus having to pulverize or completely remove all the, all of the subbase asphalt.
As little work as possible.
And then, you know, rebuild from up.
Yep.
So.
Anything else, John?
Ah, and in terms of the access point, you could be flexible about that. I figured you'd want a drop-off area in front of the building. That's the only reason I conceive why you would have this big wide driveway through the front. So you could move that farther north if a queuing is an issue, and have the same sort of sidewalk access. I just put it in because I wanted to eliminate as much asphalt as possible, which is a good thing, and I think that's something the planning board should strive to do. There are some other minor things, conflicts and that sort of thing, but those were the two big issues.
Thanks, John. Mr. Russo?
So John hit on a lot of the things. The other things I was looking at is the architectural plan set themselves have the site plan in them also. There needs to be coordination between two. I would actually recommend there only be one site plan. I don't understand why there's a site plan in the architectural set.
Uh-huh.
So that should be removed. Looking at some additional landscaping being provided around the site, along the back of the parking lots, to the right side of the site as far as shrubs, some other things to more or less buffer some areas. And then just another, some other cleanup comments with regards to the photometrics for the lighting, utilities for the site.
Great, thanks, John. Just curious, the applicant's thoughts, response to John's note about landscaping. It looks pretty anemic on the rendering you were just showing. Is it, the trees there, were those representing existing trees?
The trees on the rendering?
Yeah.
I think that's proposed, you know, obviously...
Two of them are existing and the rest are proposed.
Yeah, there are some that are existing there.
Yeah.
That we're trying, we're trying to keep them.
Along Mead Avenue there, I mean, you've got some trees along the back, but it's sparse, you know, maybe put in some shrubs to kind of...
Yeah, there's a row of white pines in the back here, and there's...
Yeah, they're not that thick, and you can really see right through that whole area.
And there's a couple, there was one that fell, and it knocked down a piece of the fence, probably in around here, so we thought we could do a little infill in there with some landscaping as well. But what we did was we tried to coordinate some of the street trees that were used in the 397 Fishkill Ave. site into this streetscape too, just to give a little continuity between the two sites.
When John used the adjective bleak in his comments to describe the stretch of, I was like, that's just dead on. So, yeah, anything that could be done to beef up the plantings and with, between the trees too, we just, you could kind of create an oasis instead of...
Yeah. Is this the extent of your landscaping plan?
No, we're really proposing mostly trees in the landscaping plan. We didn't propose any, any shrubs necessarily, and that was at the request of the applicant, just in terms of, in terms of being able to, you know, afford the improvements to the site.
Yeah, I think both of the consultants had some variation, not just trees and grass, but small planting beds and things that I don't think are that expensive and lower maintenance than grass, to fill in the gaps between the trees, both in the back next to Mead and along the frontage, to dress up the site.
Provide some visual buffer to the parking areas.
Oh, yeah, no, totally. Again, it's...
We could just keep the site the way it is.
I'm sorry?
No, you'd still need site plan approval.
I've got one question. Is, does any aspect of the physical, the proposed physical changes that we're talking about, whether it's the facade or the layout of the parking lot, or anything else that relates to changing physical characteristics of the property, does any of that relate to religious beliefs or practices?
Any incorporation of, of religious?
Are religious considerations a factor that are, that are behind any of these proposed changes?
No, not, not that I've been told, at least, no.
Okay. I didn't really think so either, but I wanted to just ask.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question.
Sometimes some religions will want, like, for example, a tower, and that will be considered like, having that architectural feature is a key part of the temple or whatever the facility is. That's what I'm asking.
No, I mean, the, the only thing I can say is that the, you know, the architect has worked with SGI. They came up with this rendering, you know, complete new facade of the building, just trying to clean it up. The only, the only signage, just so we're, there is a large freestanding sign, I'd say around here right now. That'll be removed, and the only signage would be on the, the building mounted right above the door, the main door there. Should look generally like that, so it's...
Getting rid of the big signs and replacing them with trees along Fishkill Avenue would be a benefit for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did try to create a, a street, streetscape feel along, along there, so if we can, if we can figure out a way, I can work with the applicant and see if we can come up with a...
I think, I think anything you can do to augment the scale on the landscaping to include more buffer quality, that would be advantageous.
Yeah, and generally what we're doing is we're, we're gonna have like a little belly in here in a way, and that's, that's intended just to get the drainage away. So right now, all the drainage just comes from the site. It hops over the sidewalk along 52, and then into the, into the, into the gutter. So what we're looking to do is capture all of our runoff in here, let it run through grass.
In the strip?
Hopefully get some infiltration and then get it down to the catch basins at the corner of Conklin.
You're using that, you're using that dead grass strip for...
So the grass strip is in that, it's, it's a, it's a minor belly. It's where, it's not gonna be a very defined swale, but it's kind of parabolic.
They're also catching, connecting their roof leaders into the drainage system, so you're gonna...
Where all the plastic bottles and bags are gonna end up.
I did talk to the city administrator about the front sidewalk. Originally, the city was going to replace that front sidewalk as part of a reconstruction of Fishkill Avenue. Because of bidding issues, it looks like the Fishkill Avenue project is gonna end at the park or at Blackburn.
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 Uh-huh.
So that means there's no funding for any replacement of sidewalks in this area, so repair of that sidewalk will be also something the city would expect as part of a site plan approval.
Yeah, and we're, we're hoping to try to maintain what's there for the most part. I mean, some of the, some of the sidewalk is bad. I would say that the, the curbing doesn't look wonderful there. It's not very defined, because over the years, this has been a free-for-all.
Yeah, cars are driving over.
Cars in and out wherever they wanted to here.
Yep.
And, and I think that probably had done some damage, but there are several sections of the sidewalk that aren't in terrible shape. You know, there are, there are some that are in decent shape. There are some that could use some work, so we'll try to take a better look at that as well. But, you know, obviously, cost factors into that as well for us.
Yeah, and look, I, I understand the desire to, based on a lease and, you know, on a budget, do as little as you can to get what you need, and so, fair, but at the same time, you know, you're part of the community, and there are some standards that we'd like to make sure that we see, taken into deep consideration. Curious, is this subject to ARB?
That's, well, it, ARB approval, yes. Whether you refer it to the subcommittee is up to you.
Yeah. Let's, we'll talk about that. I think next month we can decide that.
Can I mention a couple of things?
Hi, yeah, one second. A gentleman here wants to add something. Hi, how are you?
Hello, my name is Bob Scarp. I'm the architect for the project. Thank you so much for hearing our comments, and I do appreciate John's request to keep as much landscaping as possible. It's actually something that we wanted to do as well. We looked at these existing parking lots and said, there's just way too much asphalt. Let's try and cut it back. I do have a comment, though, on the parallel parking or perpendicular parking. I have no objection to it, except that I don't think it complies with zoning, because you're supposed to have an eight-foot planting strip between the parking rows, and John's didn't have that. That's, that's the reason why we didn't do it, because we were trying to comply with the zone. So if you waive that, we certainly can give it a try, but if you don't, I think we're a little stuck.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure we take that into consideration.
There are parked landscaped areas at the end of the aisles, and I think that's what the intention of the code is, not between them, but at the ends.
You know your code better than I do, but it seemed like it was, you know, a strip between the rows, and then there was a requirement that you had a curb or something in the car so the cars didn't drive into the trees, you know, which seemed to make sense to us. So that's why we did it that way. We also thought it, it broke the parking lot up without having so much asphalt. To have an entire planting strip in the middle of it tend to soften it as well. So that was our reasoning.
Okay. I know Kevin had something he wanted to add, but it didn't come out right. I hope he's okay.
He's lucky and he can breathe, so.
Yeah. Any questions for the applicant board?
Not at the moment.
Yep. Mr. Jensen? So you have the planner and the engineers' comments to work on?
I think it would be prudent to have maybe a discussion with Jennifer. I don't know if it has to be offline or whatnot, but just to make sure that we have a clear understanding of if we have to ask for something different.
Yeah, and ultimately, it'll be a discussion, not just with me, but with Bruce as well.
Yeah.
Perhaps John Clark or perhaps somebody else, depending upon that conversation.
Who knows? It's free for all.
But yes, I agree. Yeah, we want to make sure that we're on the same page as far as the zoning.
And the planning board is okay with us having that offline discussion or?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I mean, it's usually a matter of the public record, so. But yeah, no, I think before next meeting, we want to come to some understanding of what you're looking at with maintaining the six parcels, right?
Okay.
And did you have something before you unceremoniously started choking? Are you okay?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay. You had something?
No, I was just surprised that the sidewalk, seems to be that there's a public interest in a couple of things. One of them is the screening with adjacent residential. There's, the existing fencing is just intended to be maintained. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, and on the north side, there's a number of trees existing, rather large trees, actually, on the north side. So the survey shows there's a number of trees right in through here. So we're cutting back on some of that parking, and, and when we revise these ADA parking spaces over here, we're gonna be able to kind of tighten that parking up a little bit and make it a little bit smaller if this is, ends up being where we end up keeping the, the parking, of course. We could also possibly lose some more paved area here, where we were just gonna stripe out some of the existing paving here and actually turn that into some islands as well or something to that effect, you know, just to help kind of continue the idea of losing a little bit more impervious area.
That would be advantageous, yes.
And the other issue was that just the existing sidewalk is a problem.
Yep.
And it's, it's really embarrassing to, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic from Hedgewood to some of the retail things farther on, which, and I think that having that be a, one of the most, one of the most falling apart sidewalks in the city is, it's, it's embarrassing. So I think it'd be really worthwhile, and it'd be a credit to the city's caring for all of its, all of its residents to do something about that sidewalk.
I'll discuss with the client and see what we can do. I guess the other thing, just to bring up very briefly, without knowing, and I don't think anybody knows exactly what's going on with it, but Fishkill Avenue rezoning, I don't know if that's gonna affect anything we're doing here. We tried to look at some of the draft zoning that was in, or the draft zoning that was presented and incorporate some of that into this as well, but we just weren't sure.
The timeline that we know on the Fishkill Avenue rezoning is that they, there's gonna be a, I'm not sure if it's approved yet, but it will be approved, a task force to look at the area in total for the next six to nine months, and then rezoning would happen based on the recommendations of the task force. So there's no immediate changes for Fishkill Avenue zoning in the works as far as I know.
Okay. If we're here for six to nine months, I'm not gonna be happy. Just, I got a family, you know?
Well, at least we'll see you next month, right?
All right.
Anything else?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Great, thank you. So then we turn our attention to, we're off the regular agenda, and I'm not sure if that means our esteemed consultants will be hearing us, but if it does, before you go...
I'll stick around.
You're gonna stick around for the local law?
Yeah, we have to talk about the local law.
All right, you're not done with us yet, then. So we'll, we'll move on to our architectural reviews. We have two certificates of appropriateness, one for 177 Main Street. Is that applicant here? And this is for, it looks like some modifications to a facade. Good evening.
Sorry.
I haven't seen you in forever.
Yeah.
How you been?
Good.
Wow.
I'm the contractor on the building. We were contracted to paint the front of the building. The owner had contacted me. They were in contact with a representative of the building department. They said if they're painting the same color, we could do that. We got the scaffold, looked at the roof, and the roof was in disrepair, so was the storefront, so I contacted Bruce. He told me I had to come in front of the board, so...
So here you are. So you're...
I'm sorry? Gary Wood? Sorry.
Former member of the original comprehensive plan committee, right?
Yeah. Long time.
Thank you. Yep, and so that's the extent, so it's painting and the roof, or it's just the roof? Got it. And then, wow, you're going back with slate. You're going back with slate.
Now are you removing and replacing?
Happy holidays.
With new?
And you're gonna try to save the accent pieces, I think they're red?
Yeah.
Red accent pieces.
Yes. You know, a lot of people, I've been, just happen to have dealt with some slate roofs in Queens and stuff recently, and some people remove, mark it, and replace it, because a lot of the times, if it's a certain type of slate, it's absolutely is, is, is good in shape as the previous, and you only need to purchase. But what's hard to know for a contractor is how do you bid, not knowing how much you're gonna replace, and how do you be out of order ahead of time? Right. Gotcha. It's amazing how long it lasts and how durable it is. It's a great material.
Looks good. I'll accept a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve is submitted.
Motion by Len?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Good to see you again. Be well.
Good luck. Be safe.
Okay, next item on the agenda, certificate of appropriateness review for 146 Main Street. Okay, next item on the agenda, certificate of appropriateness review for 146 Main Street. This is number two, sign. Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Should I be here?
Approach the mic. Yeah, just give us a brief description of what you've got going on, and then if you do have samples, you're welcome to bring them up and share them with us.
So I just opened up a facial studio on Main Street and I'd like to hang a projecting sign. The dimensions would be 24 inches by 36 inches, 36 inches wide and 24 inches high. And the lowest point would be about 96 to 100 inches from the ground.
So is this, you're showing a side view of the building. Is this, is this intended to be mounted on the side of the building? Or is this as a blade sign?
It would be on the front of the building.
Is there an existing bracket or do you have to?
Yeah, there's a bracket already.
Yeah, she's, so is there, she's bound a sign perpendicular to the building.
Yeah.
On an existing bracket, which she had given.
Okay, so it is a blade sign.
So it's just to hang a new sign. I believe it's, it was black and white, correct?
Yep, black and white.
It was the color, was the color scheme to replace, to replace an existing sign.
So is the arrow part of your logo or is that pointing you?
No, it's not part of the logo, but the entrance is on the side of the building.
Oh.
It's next to the mountaintops, right? Or near mountaintops?
It's on the side of that same building.
Right.
Do you feel you really need the arrow?
Well, it's the second door on the side, so it's not even like the first door that somebody would pass.
Is it like past that outdoor storage area where they sometimes put kayaks? I'm trying to figure out where the...
Yeah, it's right be, it's, it's on that side of the building. It's the second door, so it's all the way in the back of the building.
There are few spaces that are down corridor, or like little sidewalks, alleys.
Yeah.
And you do need signage, I think. You know, it's hard to know that they're there.
All right.
I actually looked at renting this space like six years ago. I think they've repartitioned it since then.
Okay.
For whatever it's worth.
Just so that, just a sense of connectedness between all humans because of that, right?
Yeah. Okay. Any questions of the applicant board?
Six degrees of sign paration.
Oh, boy. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You may want to just let Taylor Palmer tell the jokes.
I've obviously been spending too much time.
We are now considering a request for one 90-day extension of site plan and subdivision approval. This is for 37 units Beacon Views Townhouses at Conklin Street. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Adam Thiberg in Site Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture PC. The board will likely remember the Beacon Views project that was approved last July. We're requesting, if possible, two 90-day extensions, which was, I think, done previously, just to give a little bit more...
Just throwing another one in there?
Just to give a little more buffer. The applicant is working, you know, towards the, the conditions of the approval. As was previously reported, the Army Corps of Engineers permit has been secured. They're getting very close on the Health Department approvals and obviously, you know, getting closer to a resolution on the conflict with the neighbor. So things are in motion, we're just looking to extend the subdivision.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to...
And the, and the site plan as well. The site plan would also need to ask for a site plan and subdivision.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Townsend Street is being subdivided and built upon, right?
There was an approved, there was an approved project, it's under construction, yes.
Yes, under construction. So have you worked out the access connections to everybody's satisfaction? Because I remember there was some question about how the circle was going to work with...
Yeah, so they're in talks with, with that neighbor, but a big contingency of their resolution of the conflict with the neighbor to the south will be, will be that piece of it. But they're also in conversation with the neighbor to the north.
Okay, so that's being worked on?
It is.
And there's no resolution as to what's going to happen with the traffic circle?
Uh, no, no, not yet. I mean, as of now, it is, it'll be, as was shown on the plan, the timing and the logistics of that are being worked out.
Yeah, because we suggested that instead of a full circle, it might be a half circle so that people who are going to your development wouldn't have to go around this sort of tight corner to get the access drive down to Beacon.
Right, right, yeah, that's, that's been discussed with, with the neighboring property and there could be modifications coming.
Okay, as long as you're thinking about it, still.
So this would be, I'd accept a motion to approve extending two 90-day extensions.
If the board feels appropriate.
Instructively to site plan and the other ones.
Subdivision.
Subdivision. So I'll accept a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then, in his last official act, am I right, next month, we're going to be, in the new year, we're going to be...
We're going to be rudderless.
Chatting with a new...
There'll be a new planner in this seat.
Do they have somebody?
Yep.
Yeah, supposedly they have somebody in there.
Is it official?
No, it's, it'll be voted on the first reorganization meeting, the first meeting in January.
Yeah, so interviews were conducted, but I don't know if all parties have been informed of this election.
Well, we know damn well John's not going to be sitting there, so somebody is, right? John's going to be in the Caribbean. Anyway, so yes, let's, let's continue our conversation about the local law and...
Can I ask you a question, just, and it's about this, but you mentioned before, John, that, I think you said that there was going to be a, one of the elements of the law was that council could make a decision to cut parking requirements in half? I'm trying to remember if I heard this correctly.
It's within a half a mile.
Under the current law, it would be eliminated because there wouldn't be any need for it.
Why, why do, how, what's the rationale or the logic between dividing the decision authority between the planning board and the council for certain elements?
Well, in the, in the past, the council has wanted more control. And in the last major rezoning in 2020, they decided to pass a lot of that control over to the planning board. So a lot of the special permits went from council to planning board because it was a nightmare going back and forth between the two boards.
Yeah, technically, under the law, the city council is like the original holder of all of the planning power, not zoning, but the, the planning power. You don't even have to have a, a planning board. And then the city council delegates that to the extent they want to, all of it or some of it to the, to the planning.
Yeah, and parts of it, they rested back a couple of years ago because God knows why.
So did they specifically...
And then decided, ooh, yuck, we don't like doing this anymore. And so let, make the planning board do it, so.
Did they specifically request to hang on to that one decision? Or I'm just saying...
That's proposed to be struck, that's in the current, what John Clark had mentioned, that's in the current code and it's proposed to be...
So you would, you would have the option of waiving 50% or more or whatever you think's appropriate, based on the proximity to a train station. But under the certain code right now, 50% could be waived by the council, if it's within a half-mile walk of the train station.
Has anybody done any actual build-out, test fits of existing lots that are in these various locations? It's a, this is how much parking would be provided under these various alternates for parking. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, there are some large lots, let's say on Fishkill Avenue, let's say in other places, but what would be the impact, right? Of what, how, what would be the provision, right? How many, how many units would be required for certain lot sizes with the zoning and the other regulations with the change of this? So that the impact is understood, right? So that there's some study done, in reality, of actual lots that exist here, rather than just sort of conceptualizing that, you know what I mean?
There was a build-out analysis done in 2018 of the whole city, but it didn't take much into consideration of Fishkill Avenue because at the time, the tenants were ensconced there and nobody thought that that would turn over as quickly as it has. But there was a build-out analysis done with the water supply for all the parcels in the city.
But that was for number of units, not for parking? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there was no parking portion of that build-out.
Right.
It was based on number of units and water needs.
The reason why I'm saying that is like, are there going to be unexpected consequences that we don't understand because we haven't studied extensively, or at least certain selected anticipatable development locations?
Under this new law, that would be very challenging to do because, so it would make sense to do that under the existing law because it's requiring a minimum, right? And so theoretically, yeah, it'd be great to be able to know the max build minimum on everything, you know, that could potentially be proposed. But in, in the case of the new law, it would, it would somewhat serve that purpose of allowing the flexibility of the city, the planning board, around, to some degree, at a granular level, the parking in the city.
So if, if east end of Main Street, for instance, which is the current area, which is most parking shortages, you would be able to take a harder line on the east end of Main Street than you would on the west end of Main Street, under the flexibility baked into this, whereas under minimum standards, they'd have to be the same, or they would typically be the same.
Right. But are there, are there potential concerns about the first in, first, you know, that the first developers in an area that has, that currently doesn't have a shortage, but because they've decided, well, we don't have a shortage, we're not going to provide any parking because there's plenty of street parking and other things around us, all of a sudden, accumulatively, there's no longer parking capacity because it's been taken up by the first adopters, kind of what happened in some, there's examples of that that have already happened at Beacon, right? So that's one concern, that if it's purely done on, if we have more of that flexibility that we are going to be giving more than is, if we don't plan it comprehensively, that we're going to be, the first movers are going to have, take up the, the free capacity.
Yes, I mean, the Main Street Access Committee looked at entirely along Main Street for parking demand and as long as you could project, but it's very hard. There's so many changes in technology and mobility that things are changing at, you know, every year and a half in terms of electric bikes and scooters and, and transit systems are changing and, and autonomous cars can change things, you know?
You've got to have a death wish to want to ride an electric bike on Main Street on the weekend.
Yeah, no, effectively...
I've seen a lot of people do it.
Yeah, the way I look at this is that it's decoupling applications from a, you know, a minimum parking requirement that's somewhat outdated based on modalities, right? Different emerging modalities. And it's navigating the city much more toward, away, much more away from an automobile-dependent outlook and approach and a much more walkable, right? So we're going to get, and look, I live here, I experience times when I need to go quickly pick something up in my car on Main Street and I can't find a damn parking spot, but that's just the way it is, right? So, and I, I live two blocks from Main Street, I should just walk.
Me too.
So we're, we're at a point where, yes, there's, there's going to be a finite number of parking spots, there's going to be new applications, although we're reaching sort of the limit too with large builds. Each one of those large builds is going to be a part of a review process where we have the ability, based on this new law, with the applicant, to define appropriate parking for that parcel with all of these things in consideration, right? The, the limiting of permeable surface, only that amount of parking which is deemed appropriate for that particular application, the different modalities, the, you know, proximity to transportation. So I see that as, I see this as a good thing. I think we've made some really good comments back to the, the council. So I would just, you know, press you all for any others that we want to make sure that we roll in. But yeah, go ahead.
First of all, if we want to talk about whether or not we agree with the idea of whether we should be reducing use of automobiles overall because they're too dangerous or and/or because of environmental concerns, that's one discussion, but to put it simply, you don't lose weight by buying smaller pants. What we're talking about here in terms of cutting down the parking requirement is shifting the private cost of the decision to own a car to the public. And those private costs, the social cost, the incremental social cost of an additional car being parked on the street is not going to line up with the incremental private benefit, which is the whole reason we have a parking requirement in the first place. If the parking standards are outdated, and I'm not really sure they are that outdated because the last time I went through that ITV Parking Guide, their numbers for various uses were not very far off from the ones that are currently in the zoning resolution. We should be updating those numbers. I, we already routinely grant exemptions based on shared parking studies. Frankly, I've often got the concern that we're being too deferential to consultants we don't have control over. I don't see what benefit we get by repealing this requirement, and I especially don't see what benefit we're getting by taking what used to be the maximum, decrease, or the minimum, decreasing it and making it the maximum. Like, I just, it...
You know, the...
We've enumerated some of them. One of them is, so there's, and I don't know if we've touched on it tonight, but it's an onerous process, not only for the applicant and the city, especially in context of the 64, and as well, the requirements in a number of, in a number of instances. We've, we end up waiving regardless.
Was it, was it within the last year that the city supervisor was, and the mayor were talking about structured parking? Or is it more than that? And I guess I'm trying to make sure there isn't...
Don't get me started.
Well, no, but that's, that's something that I would, viscerally, I, I would hate that more than anything else. And I guess I'm just saying, is there a cognitive dissonance if, if on one hand, somebody's saying, like, let's eliminate parking recurrence, and there's still somebody else saying, maybe we need to build a parking structure next to a municipal building? Has that been resolved at all?
The Main Street Access Committee looked at parking for a three-phase approach. One phase was to use existing asphalt more efficiently, so restriping parking.
Like they just did on Henry Street, which is great.
And without paving anything, we created theoretically up to 300 and some spaces. So that would take the short-term demand issue intact. If indeed parking continues to be a crunch time and people are dissatisfied, they don't think that they don't have enough parking, the second step was to implement paid parking because you can control demand by increasing price. Free parking is really giving into the automobile as the only suitable way for people to get around because it's all free.
A hundred percent.
And the taxpayers pay for it. You talk about the taxpayers burdening, they're paying for all that parking now with no input from the tourists who create the parking crunch. You don't have a parking problem on Wednesday, you have a parking on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday problem. And that's based on the fact that the tourists are coming in, getting free parking and not paying for any of it.
Thank you.
They're paying indirectly when they go to stores and buy stuff.
Oh, the sales tax rebate is almost nonexistent in terms of providing parking.
You're managing a public resource. That's, that's a great thing to do.
Yes, and so the first, second phase was if we have an undeniable demand and a human cry for more parking, to institute paid parking like Cold Spring just did, so you can control the amount of parking that's available on Main Street or in the public lots. And then if that doesn't work, which I think is way down the line, the third option would be a parking garage or two, so that you can consolidate parking lined with buildings so you don't see it, and, and, and that would free up land that are currently used for parking for affordable housing. That was the option.
Part of my problem with that is, is what John, what David, and I'm sorry, I just have to just bring this up, is, is that what you're doing is you're privileging the private developers and giving them a, and a benefit of that, of not having to provide parking or provide a limiting parking, which I think we should produce it, we should manage it. But the first thing you're doing is giving away this public resource for free, right, to the developers with, number one, some expectation that there was, that was going to reduce rent pressure, which I don't think is the case, it hasn't been the case for the whole time I've lived here. Number two, that eventually that becomes a public expense because parking garages are incredibly expensive. They also have this huge environmental expense as far as like the ambiance of a city. Nobody goes to Poughkeepsie to hang out at that parking garage they have. They have multiple parking garages that are empty all the time because they're unpleasant places to inhabit.
So can I ask you, Kevin, all of this is great, but debating policy here is not getting, is not getting...
No, we're just saying, if we're commenting on really, I think if we're, if we're commenting on releasing that requirement for parking, if somebody thinks we're going to need structured parking down the road, I would say, don't release them from the parking requirement. Make, let's make, retain the ability to force projects to provide parking if that's going to... going to take off the pressure on someday having to build a parking structure.
Overparking is bad.
Nobody's imagining a parking structure now. They just said that's the latch-up progression of 30 years from now, or 20 years from now, or whenever, if those other things don't work, and my feeling was paid parking would take care of the problem.
I, I would tend to agree. Now, the problem that I've seen, I talked to all these people, nobody wants to do it. Nobody has a lick of sense or guts to put in paid parking.
Translate, translate everything you just said into a part of a recommendation to the city council, because it may not be policy, it's just there's a debate here that the city is not here, they're not seeing the benefit of, and, you know, our charge is to, just to review, if it ultimately means that some on the planning board, because of all of the reasons that you just stated, don't recommend that any law change in any way, shape, or form, then we should so state it? Or somehow translate what you're saying into something we can communicate back to the city council, please?
I do not, I have not seen what I would consider to be a sufficiently compelling case to change the status quo on this matter. It may very well be worth looking into updating the parking standards, it may be looking into doing a couple of things, like explicitly saying, hey, if you've got a building on Main Street and there's no realistic way you can put in parking, we're just going to exempt you, instead of having the dog and pony show of making an ad hoc determination every time, but that doesn't get me to the end result of, like, what we're doing is working better than I think what we would be doing with this change.
Okay, so, so was that how you want to frame what Jennifer's going to add to the...
I wouldn't say...
Say, ah, take it step by step, please. Because we could, we could do this for the next hour, and I don't want to. I want to be concise in sharing our thoughts and observations back to the council, please.
Then the other things I'd say is, above and beyond that, we should have an application standard that is less deferential to consultants selected by the applicants, and the language in the draft law, limiting what a consultant hired by the board is going to look into should be stricken in favor of a broad grant of authority for any purposes deemed appropriate by the planning board, including by, to whatever you want to list.
Okay.
Let me just say that Beacon has more consultants than any other community I've ever seen.
My god, yes.
And you are, you are really well represented by consultants in this community, compared to every, every planning board in, at least Dutchess County, which is what I'm familiar with. So having the applicant do the dirty work, which is all the computation and the, the traffic counts, and having them reviewed by your consultant, who gives you the best advice about whether they're on track or not, makes entire sense to me. Why have your consultant do all that work?
Has it ever turned out that the consultant that was paid for by the developer recommended something that was not to the developer's interest? It doesn't happen.
Yeah, it's because you have perhaps the wrong consultants, because traffic engineers are traffic engineers. You can get good ones and you can get ones that aren't so good. Now, I actually think the ones you have are pretty good, but there are ones who are really specialized in alternative transportation and are much more hard-lined about...
And they work for public interest, they work for public entities, they don't work for...
No, there's some private firms as well.
Because they're forced to by laws or, you know, development regulations.
I want to, I want to, I want to trust that when we hire a consultant, that they're working in our city's best interest, because we're paying them, and they are licensed professionals. When a consultant hires, or excuse me, when an applicant hires a consultant, they have the freedom to hire whoever they want, bad or good. The whole reason, as John just stated, for the city hiring a good consultant to check their work, is that they're going to catch them out on poor quality work.
So I called up our parking consultant three months ago to go over how they had reviewed a parking study, and I specifically asked, did you think it was appropriate to put these uses in this category? And he said, we're not second guessing that. As long as it looks like it was a reasonable determination, even if we wouldn't evade the same one ourself, we're signing off on it. And I thought, these outside consultants have too much control here, and I'm seeing a proposal that gives them even more control.
And what I go to that is...
Sorry, Jen, give Jen a moment.
It doesn't change the consultant.
Look, I think that David's point is well taken, that the provision on, you know, to the extent that the provision in the code is seen as limiting what the consultant would look at, that should be broadened. I think that you have, to what John said, you have excellent consultants working for the city, including your traffic consultant. They work throughout the Hudson Valley, for many municipalities, and I've seen great work from them, and I work with a lot of different traffic consultants in both my private work and my public work. I don't think we should spend our time today debating the quality of your consultants.
Agreed, agreed. And I also, I also don't think we're...
And to David's point, that's, that's something that we can incorporate if there's a consensus of the board, about making sure that we're not circumscribing the scope of our review.
I certainly want to, wouldn't want to limit the ability for the city, through our consultants and their reviews, any of the consultants, from investigating or studying or further understanding any aspect of an application. I don't know why we would do that, so I'm in support of that.
There was no intention to do that in the wording here.
I'm sure there wasn't.
And what the intention was, and maybe what you're reading into it, is that the consultants would base their review on local comparable contextual Beacon or regional issues, rather than taking the suburban standards in the ITA and translating that to Beacon, which is completely ridiculous. The ITA standards are way out of date and really suburban splanted, so that they overestimate the need for parking and traffic.
But don't you think, don't you think it's simpler to have minimums and maximums and have prescriptive rules for some of these things, and then you don't need consultants at all? There's like, here's your minimum, here's your maximum, and there's, and if you want to change that or specify why you have different needs, right, then, then you use a consultant to justify that. But for the majority of these applications, they, there are a lot of smaller and other that aren't massive, the large, you know, larger, you might need a specific study, but I'd like to see it simplified, so that we're not generating tons of consultant reports that are really specific and technically detailed, but don't actually address broader needs, because those things aren't, that could be addressed with simple prescriptive numbers and tables.
Personally, I, and I'm sure the city, would prefer using funds wisely to hire professionals to add to the official record for the safety and the security of these reviews. So I, there's absolutely a place for professional consultants. I don't think anything about what the new law is doing does anything to change this, and we talked about this earlier in the evening, to change the ability of the city to hire a consultant in support of a review of an application. So I don't even know why we're talking about it.
And just for the record, the consultant is paid for by the applicant, our consultant, the city's consultant, so they're independent in the sense that they answer to us, but the bill doesn't go to you, the bill goes to them.
But that increases, that increases rent, right? That's a cost of the developer, that could even cause rent pressure.
It's a wash. It's cost neutral.
That doesn't change, the way that works now doesn't change. The only thing I'm suggesting in here is that you use local and contextual examples for coming up with a rationale for parking, rather than IT standards that are based on suburban models from Arizona or...
I think that's very appropriate. So again, how, how does this translate into what we would like to then share back to the city as relates to our view of the changes to this law?
Is the wording not clear on that one? Because David was concerned that it was circumscribing the consultant's ability to look at it, and John's clarifying and saying, no, I was just trying to get them to use local context instead of relying only on national manuals.
Yeah, we're not going to wordsmith it here, but I think the comment back to the city council would be to make sure that this can't be viewed as being circumscribed and limiting, to make sure that broad language is used to require the local data to be used instead of the IT, but not otherwise limit the consultant's review.
Well, it would also, I think, make sense to add language in the paragraph above, where it's talking about factors that the board is going to consider to include a consultant retained by the board, since that's not in there now, which is kind of a notable absence.
That you have the authority to retain a consultant or...
Right, but it doesn't say we have authority to base our decision on what they say.
That's not something that needs to be codified, that's just part of your authority. You make decisions based on all of the information before you...
I should, I should point out that there's, what you've gotten, there's also supplemental zoning changes that will have to be packaged into this law if the council agrees on the basic concept. So the CMS district has a parking section, the linkage district, the waterfront development district, the Fish Creek Development District, certain special permitted uses, all have parking sections in which they say things, and so those supplemental parking amendments will have to be made part of this package. And I have that all here, I'm sure you don't want to go through it now, but I can send it to you, so that you could look at it.
But John, do you think it would be instructive to actually look at the examples that follow those existing requirements, some of which are overparked, like Creek Drive? Nobody's ever in that lot, right? There's way too many parking spots there. There are other places that are not...
Go there on a weekend, yeah.
Oh, okay, my point is that there are some, some lots aren't utilized, some are massively utilized, it's contextual, it's about the spot they're in. So, and some buildings, even though they don't have, generate the same, they generate the same demand because of where they are, are not, they don't have sufficient parking, and they're, they're causing impacts on surrounding streets. So I think we need to, that's why I'm suggesting that a broad, either, that there are problems with removing, the first thing was like removing all requirements, all minimums, which I was like, wait a minute, and then, but then now we're talking about doing consultant reviews for every single...
No, not for every single, just when the planning board requests it.
Okay, but not for one and two family stuff.
Okay, okay, but you know what I'm saying.
It's not required, it's not a required component, it's when you feel it's necessary or when the applicant unilaterally submits, you know, a study.
So part of any parking study now, instead of just using formulaic minimums and IT standards, they will have to go out and look at Creek, if the property is next to Creek Drive and there's a parking lot next door that's only 50% utilized, they'll say that, and they'll say, maybe there isn't as much parking demand in this area, there's enough street parking that people don't use it, or whatever. Remember the storage business that was proposed at Hip Lofts? And they came in and the standards that we had required 109 spaces or something ridiculous? And they went out and did a study of the parking storage places in this area and came out they needed eight spaces. And the planning board changed the standard to, based on those regional examples. That sort of thing will happen, and you'll build up a case study, because each parking study that comes out will have to look at that sort of data, rather than using sort of national standards and minimum standards in arbitrary ways.
Can I ask you something? To that point, does, does any part of a new requirement make that explicitly clear to an applicant? Meaning that it...
I mean, that's what I tried to do in these paragraphs, talk about context-driven and as opposed to national standards.
Good.
Regional examples.
So, what else?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So into 23-25, which governs your site plan, that's your site plan section, one of the triggers for site plan review is change in use, and change in use is defined based on a change in parking requirement. So if you have like an office that goes to a restaurant, that's a change in use because it's...
This is like with the Buddhist center tonight.
It changes the parking requirements, right? It's based on 23-26F, which is the whole list of your now minimum requirements. Is the intent to keep that, but now base the change on use on the maximum standards?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Because I didn't, I didn't pick that up when I was, did my review of the supplemental changes that have to be made. I think I missed that.
Okay, so that, that might be a question for the council to consider, because maybe the council hasn't...
Yeah, fair.
...had hold of that question either.
Do you know how to formulate that? Do you know how to formulate that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's your sense of the timing on the council's...
Well, I had realized that this was going to be a public hearing set up on the 18th, so they are at least serious about hearing from the public on it.
This month?
Yes, and I expect a lot of blowback, and the council has cold feet.
David and Kevin will be there, with bells on, right?
I'm supposed to be in Florida that day, I don't know, fall, I'll get, I'll get some...
You should write your letter.
There's, there's one other thing I'd say, and I'm sorry, because I know we all, myself included, want to get out of here, but again, the actual language here, both in subpart B2, so bottom of page two, as well as then, in the schedule of uses, other uses not listed, bottom of page nine, nothing against the building inspector, whoever the building inspector may be. As far as transparency consideration, I'm concerned about adding language that allows the building inspector to either determine the parking requirement or to determine whether parking should be allowed in a front yard, and it's, like I said, not because of any concern with the building inspector, it's more because that's kind of a significant public determination, and forcing it to go to the planning board gets it on the record and allows people to like contribute to that decision.
Yeah.
And that's not taking place if the building inspector is just doing that on his own.
Yeah, although it gives us plausible deniability, if it is the building inspector.
There are situations where it's just a resident, like a single-family residence, where it's in the building, I think that's the intention.
This section, B2 in particular, there's a confusion in the code, the way it's, the language reads now, because it refers to no parking, even in a single-family home, is allowed in the front yard of a, of a, of a house, or a whatever, in any residential district. That's what's in the code now, and single-family homes are only reviewed by the building inspector, not by the planning board. So the building inspector is supposed to make sure that the parking is not in the front yard, but that our definitions of front yard are confusing. If you go to the definition section, it says front yard is from the front lot line to the building, the front plane of the building. But if you go to our tables, the front yards are, instead of saying front setback, it says front yard, which is less than to the front plane of the building, it's an arbitrary number, you know, like 10 feet or 15 feet. And so it's confusing as to what exactly is referred to when you say front yard. So alls I did was change this to say the front plane of the building, which is the definition of a front yard. So you can have front yard parking in a driveway, but your designated spaces have to be behind the front plane of the building. So if you're required to have two spaces in a, for a house, they can either be in the garage or next to the house, they can't be in front of the house, they don't want to have front yard parking.
So, but, so technically, like for example, most of the parcels in town, the driveway goes from the street on either side of the house to the rear, or stops somewhere, you know, but like for example, my house, I have a short driveway, I park technically in my front yard, if I've got two, if I've got two cars in the driveway. So, so you're saying that any new application...
Is supposed to have parking behind the front plane of the building.
Would need to have a driveway long enough...
And that's the way the law reads if you use the definition, but applicants have questioned it because the front yard in the dimensional table is different than the front yard in the definitions.
It's only like the front 15 feet instead of the front...
So what you're saying is, is that all cars have to be parked past the front plane of the building?
The designated spaces. So if there's two designated spaces now, you're supposed to have two parking spaces for a single-family home, you have to have either a two-car garage, or you have to have one past the side of the building.
So you can't park anywhere else on your driveway?
Well, you can park in the driveway, you get the permit, but your designated spaces have to be behind the front plane of the building.
Now, John...
To prevent front yard parking. Now, houses like yours and houses our grandfather, they can't do it. But any new construction of a house is supposed to figure out a way to put the car behind the front plane of the building.
Now, because of the lot sizes, the design intent of this is to not have a car in front of the face of your house, right? Blocking the view of the house.
Yeah.
See the house, see the car. I mean, I could see some situations where actually you could just be beyond the sidewalk, off to the side, and there are a lot of houses where they have those narrow lots, and they've built into the setback, to the setback, and you can't drive past the side, right?
Yes.
So if you were going to renovate or replace... So if you were going to renovate or replace an existing floor plate like that, you would have to do something, you know, extraordinary to not park, you know, in front of the face plane of the house. But the design intent is to kind of not have an ugly car, a rusty pickup truck, something poor people have. You don't want to look at poor people's cars. You want it to be in the side, right?
So that's the reason for, for the language in here. And the attorney, city attorney changed it to add the building inspector because building inspector does determine on single-family homes.
Keep it building inspector, on single-family homes. We don't want to have to deal with every single, single-family home.
So that's the reason behind that change in the wording there. It's to reinforce what's already there, but clear up the confusion that, you know, unless you want to change the definition of, of what a front yard is, that's consistent with the definition of a front yard. It's that we used the wrong term in the table, instead of front setback, we said, it was said front yard. And I would change that and next time we did the table.
Something like 15 years ago on Route 90 up by like Houstonville or somewhere, there was this little tiny shack, and for like six months it had like a Ford GT40 parked out in front of it, right in front of the front door. Somebody had like a lotto win or something and-
Yeah.
Nice. Remember the old Ford Thunderbird on Main Street at the brass-
And after building permits go out, people park wherever they want. And, you know, this is just designed to eliminate front yard parking lots in residential districts.
Yep, got it.
That makes sense.
Okay, do we have what we need?
I think we, well, I'm not clear as to whether there's a consensus in favor of adoption of the local law or not.
Do we have to go so far as to-
Typically, the council does want to know whether you're-
Generally in favor or generally not.
Yeah, I mean, in favor of it's adopted.
Stropeau?
I'm in favor.
Stropeau? Struble in favor?
In favor.
So, I just need to, we, we've, we've had a ton of comments and I'm just trying to make sure, are we, what we're voting in favor or not in favor of?
In favor, we're, in favor of making a recommendation.
No, I know, I understand, but I'm just saying like, is it-
Should local law be adopted or not?
But we've commented on a bunch of it. Is it, are we saying it's adopted as-
As provided the following are, are taken into consideration.
You're, you're in favor of the general concept-
With our, with our comments.
With some minor changes or whatever you think is appropriate.
You're in favor.
In favor with the comments.
So you have three in favor, two not. So generally in favor.
Did I say not? I said not. We didn't vote.
Raise your hand when I said in favor.
Right, so is it three to two? Or is it, because I, I, we're going to have to, Mercedes and I are going to have to draft-
Yeah, you're going to have to put something on the record.
The memorandum back to the city council reflecting.
You have, right now, you have three in favor.
Because if it was four, then like we could say the planning board is in favor, but if it's not four, then it has to be drafted as like a mixed opinion.
The memo should note the comments, the negative comments of the people who are not in favor.
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, we could draft it that way. I just need to-
Right, which we should do.
Make sure we're accurately reflecting what the-
Right.
Opinion of the board is.
Since there's not a, not a 100% agreement, we're not going to take a vote.
No, 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 no. We have three in favor, two in, not in favor.
Okay, okay, okay. I wasn't sure what you said, what you were saying. All right.
Is that the case? Yes? You're not in favor.
Yes.
You're not in favor, you're not in favor. Three of us are. It's three to two.
If you had to still listen to five words, it'd be that the, the, the minimums have now become the maximums.
Yes. And if I understand Kevin, he would prefer to have a range, a minimum and a maximum range.
I'd like it to be simple, yeah. And I'd like it to not be as, I'd like to see if there's a way that we can do a comprehensive thing, you know, all those things.
Where I'm on the planning board, that's what they have. They have a minimum and a maximum range, and it causes all sorts of confusion because the arguments are always, you should be the minimum, you should be, both are legal, how do you, how do you determine between both? It's, it's awkward, but, you know, it's a viable alternative, and I've lived with it for 20 years.
Yeah, we've somehow, we've somehow gotten by and we've all survived.
Yeah, but we all have this experience and we can, all of us together, and we should just give the best, our best advice to how to go forward.
Totally. Great, so, but I just want to, on the record, thank Mr. Clark for all of his years of incredibly dedicated service, and we're truly going to, I'm truly going to miss you. For everything you've done for Beacon and for your, your obvious passion and love for the city, it's probably not going to be very easy to replicate, so thank you. It's been a real, true honor and pleasure working with you, John.
I must admit that working for Beacon for six years or seven years has been much more gratifying than working for the county for 30 years.
We'll take it, thanks. It's awesome.
I, I really, really do love the city. I've tried to talk my wife into moving here and she won't, but if it was up to me, I would move to Beacon. Because I think it's like the most incredible place in terms of its overall setting, the idea, you have the river on one side and the mountains on the other, and you're in this little wedge at the end of that terminus so you don't have any heavy through traffic. It's just ideal from a perspective in having a train, short train ride to the city relatively.
Yeah, it's awesome.